Hey. To order a special board meeting at the West Valley School. July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Citizens may comment on items appearing on the agenda when invited to speak during the agenda item by the board chair. Citizens may comment on items related to school district business not appearing on this agenda during the public comment portion of the meeting. Citizens, after identifying themselves, will proceed to make comments as briefly as the subject permits. Basic rules of decorum are in effect at all times. The chairperson may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement where appropriate, including when statements are out of order to lengthy breach, personal privacy rights are abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or otherwise improper. The public should realize that this is a trustee business meeting inducted in public forum. The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the liberty of the public, for which it stands one nation, one hundred dollars, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, wishing to speak, so coming. I felt that we could use this time before Tina comes in as the for interview. For an entrance superintendent, discuss some of the issues we might have with the questions. And I think this might be good time to do that in public form here, so. There is not, I mean, nobody, okay, no. So when they don't sign up. So that's, yeah. And and I don't know if this is a proper place to to discuss the fact that we have had another application for sent in to us yesterday or today. For the position. So as a board, I guess we need to decide whether we would like to open it up or if there are interview or. Hold what we have here. That and that's what we have in front of us is resume from Stella from Harden. Steve Mayhew. I'm, you know, I guess for the board to discuss whether we want to do it or not. I think this might be the place to discuss it. I'm not sure where else it would be in the meeting, so. We have the information, Cecilia is thick, so she sent on the information to us this earlier today. And Terry was good enough to start the hour up. And Jeff is going to take notes, so we're set up with Cynthia being sick.
When did we receive the application?
You know, it had to have been either yesterday, it had to have been yesterday sometime. But she didn't send it on to us until this afternoon. Because she was sick this morning and I asked her if she please come in and send it to us so we would have something to go by. Making a decision whether or not we wanted to open it up. And and I checked with the MTSBA, I'm there, probably okay, it was holding me to view. I mean, keeping the position open for another interview, we'll get that. Um, I think we did have a date when we put it on OPI, but when I put it on Sam, the. I don't know where he is, superintendents, whatever it is. Um, I didn't put a stop date, so he may have applied to that. And that's why. So I don't know if we would want to hold it open.
Do you want me to say what I discussed with you prior to the meeting? Um. I have concerns.
I think we.
As I've discussed, yes, others. So I made a couple of phone calls. Um, and I think sticking with our two candidates, I'm going to go based on the things that I heard.
I guess the issue I have is there are a lot of people who are thinking that bringing somebody in would be better than trying. To use what we have.
Well, I think, I think, I think, to clarify, I think people, and we would all like to have that perfect.
Okay.
Seasoned experience superintendent come in and kind of be the calming force to kind of guide us to our next step per year, but. Obviously, we put that out, Marilyn, you reached out to.
I did.
Pretty much everybody that we could think of on the list, call them personally.
And they all wanted to offer their help, but they were not going to take the position.
Exactly, so, so maybe we made some good contacts there to get their help. We don't get them full time, but we got a connection there that that could work, so.
So I guess our ideal is, do we want to open this up or do we or not?
Do me, I just got the email at four thirty, so I'm just looking at it for the first time right now.
Need to. Cecilia didn't send it until this afternoon. And we do have a little time here.
We got twenty-one minutes. You to watch.
He's deep keeping real good.
Should we maybe work through the interview question that?
Yes.
That we want to change first, just so we're ready, because we don't necessarily have to make a decision on this right then, second.
No, we don't. This is something we think about, I just, it's in, Laurel, I'm thinking, rather than the individual involved. It's more like that the concept, you know, of opening it up, because we've always said, well, nobody else supplied. And it's more like there's a lot of people out there saying, you tried very hard.
You know, I I was able to look at this a little bit earlier today, not, I wasn't able to make them calls or anything, but. I feel like you have an applicant that is, you know, equally or less experienced than our internal applicants. And it's an unknown kind of quantity in that regard. Again, this isn't, this isn't our kind of perfect interim candidate coming in pardon, that's. You know, been a superintendent for twenty years and just wants to come smooth up everything over this. Yeah, this is also kind of a new candidate. That, you know, doesn't have superintendent experience as far as, you know, I could tell, so, I I mean, I I side Laurel on, I think we. I would opt to continue with the the two candidates that we have internally.
I mean, beyond even my phone calls, like if we're looking at the last couple of years, there's been a fair amount of hopping. You know, and truly, it's like we need stability, I think, as much as we can possibly get it, so.
It's up, it's up to the board, I know, I'm kind of open. Well, should we go on and discuss the questions and maybe think about this just a bit, and then we can come back to this? Okay, um, Laura, I had a couple of suggestions to change here. And do you know which ones would be additional?
So I have a couple amendments to add. To the question, so first would be in terms of question seven, because it's asking. You know, what would you do to learn about the school culture, or candidates know about the school culture? So my question would be, we have spent the last several years working on school district climate and culture, what has gone well with that? What areas need work and how would you continue to build upon work that has been done? So kind of a multifaceted approach there, just to analyze what they think of where we're at and where they want to go.
I think it's a good change in myself.
And then question nine. Um, the question is, what do you think motivates you to be a superintendent, knowing that there can be long hours and a great deal of stress involved with this position or with this job? And then my follow-up question on that is, do you think you may have interest in this position long term? So is this just only interim interest, or is there something beyond that for them potentially?
That's great.
Then question thirteen. I want to amend it to not just say, in what ways do you display trust in your faculty's professional decisions? But to really dive into that managerial style, so I want to be, please describe your managerial style. And what that will look like in your role as superintendent, and what ways do you display trust in your faculty's professional decisions? And then, and that should be on a page that I submitted, let's see.
Over here.
Yeah. So each of you have what I did except for question nine. Um, then additional questions that kind of came into my mind in terms of hitting the small angles. Is what are your thoughts on collaboration and mentorship between school superintendents? And what opportunities, if any, would you like to pursue for yourself in this area?
I'm okay with making that question sixteen.
And the.
Yes, question. Have you planned to communicate?
Yeah, I was just, are we canceling out question sixteen about renewal?
There's no.
Oh, I got sixteen.
Uh, sixteen through twenty.
I got through twenty.
I've got a different set of questions.
I printed my own.
Yeah, I printed my own, too.
Okay, so I printed these were the same ones we used for Cindy Richard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same exact one.
What?
Except that mine ended fifteen.
Oh, interesting, yeah, so I got sixteen. This is what.
We can share, yeah. It's a good. Okay. Um, so then additional questions are, how do you plan to communicate with the public on matters of school concern? And then final question, superintendents have a great deal of work to accomplish that requires office time. What level of visibility within the school and classrooms do you envision for yourself in your role as superintendent? And what will that visibility look like for you?
So these would be.
Technically, like three additional questions and then just three other good questions.
Right.
Well, I really like it, I think, in part because obviously we just use the same questions from the prior process. So this kind of springs some new questions off of my tech, which is good to see their answers and your actions to those. And then I think you cleared up quite a few that don't make as much sense.
I think.
Already here, so that's, those are all great additions.
Thank you.
I think we should change it and then, and then add, which would be twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we pop them in between the nineteen and then.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
Would be the last one, so it needs to be, this would be twenty, I'm just, because we got to keep this.
On your amendment to question seven, I know you kind of talk about like. The last several words were, you know, school district climate and culture, what's gone well with that, what areas need work, which is, you need to build upon the work that's been done. I don't know, and I don't know the right wording, but maybe something to the extent of how to get that culture back as one. Because I feel like there's a little, there's some division between elementary and middle, like how do we work on getting the culture?
Well, maybe that's just a follow, like a question that comes after, even, because I think diving into that would be very good.
Okay, so we need to write that down, because we need to ask each of them that.
Right. Um, let's see, so after question seven. We would pop in eight.
Or you could do like a seven, eight.
Yeah, so seven A and then seventy. And then, um. Let's see.
Yeah, I thought we were going to abandon what is now question seven on this and just, are you going to?
Yeah, I mean, I just rewrote the entire question under the amendment right there, just to make it simple.
Goes out, and we're going to put this new question in there with the new wording, right?
Yeah. Okay, so how do we want to work? Let's see, how do you view the relationship between the elementary and middle schools? What do you? What would you do to continue to further unify?
Yeah, something to let, to bring them together as one.
And do we want to try and think of how we dive into that, not necessarily from a principal standpoint, right? Because it's like, they probably have a good collaborative relationship, but like the overall environments.
Just like plans to unify it like a one, like what.
Yeah.
And I think we just ask them, what would you, what would you do to unify the two schools? Okay, now isn't that is what we're saying?
Yeah.
So how do you view the current relationships between? The elementary school. And the middle school.
Do we say as units? I don't know, I don't know if I'm getting too type A on this.
I think you are, yeah.
It's truly a hazard with me.
Just the vision on the two and then how, like, you know, the approach on unifying those two. And say we probably want this same person asking the questions on both.
I think so.
And so I just go around. Start at the end and just come back and forth, I guess, I mean, as far as the great, go down the line.
Not sure if I got the updated questions, skip me.
Well, I mean, we can take.
Maybe we can pass that one off to Laurel.
They may be like her. That way we're Laurel.
Yeah, let's, let's say number seven is the world. No matter where she falls in the line, that's. That you'll give that, Jeff.
Take them all, Jeff, take them all.
First and nine, what do you think, and that one's easy, you think you might add, you think you might stay.
I mean, I'm happy to let you guys just split the others and then just, because there's. What is it, twenty-five questions, twenty-three questions? So I mean, I can ask these six, and then you guys can do the rest if you want.
The ones that, the last ones we use. Let's see.
I'm good with that, just let her read this page.
You seven?
Yeah.
Twenty? Whatever, nine?
Yep.
Seven and nine?
Yeah, thirteen. And then, yeah, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. So it's technically, it would be twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. Yeah.
And twenty-two, last twenty, if you have any questions for us. Let me have, we're going to have to squeeze this in for now, aren't we?
We'll probably want to specify that they need to ideally answer in three minutes or less. I don't know if we want to. We can just see how we're doing for time and then halfway through, if we're really not, it'll just check, clocking on, we can.
Do we technically have like a hard window to interview then, that is that part of it as well, like, you know, interview for?
I've never heard anybody say that to you.
Or I'm just courtesy for when they show up, they don't have to.
We can make Richard sit out there and sweat longer.
Whatever we do, just so long as we do it equally, I think we're.
Isn't that what principals do, is like make the kids sit out in the hall?
Right.
What happened before they're, you know, like going back, maybe you pay it back to them a little bit.
Right, I have to say that technically, technically, Richard can't sit in on in his interview.
Yeah.
Because it's an open meeting, but Richard chose not to. So he will not be here for the meeting, but it is true. And and Tina will not be here for Richard's, because she's going to be on her way to Helena to a meeting, so. I, yeah, so we'll just have the one interview we hear.
So do we want to pivot back to that resume?
So do we need to, just with that comment, do we need to? Sorry, ask Tina in regards to any comments that she would want to make in executive session? After her interview, probably one, so that she, if she doesn't have any, then she could leave.
Probably with the clarification, it would have to be like.
Oh.
Major personal issues only. Um.
Yeah, you can ask her that question.
They should ask that question.
I think he's going to say no, I mean.
If, yeah, give her the option.
Okay, yeah, let's do that, we're not, I mean, we're not going into executive session, as far as I can tell, and as somebody calls for it, at which point. Both candidates have to be in the session with us. Both two, that's the rule.
Unless they waive their rights.
And I say they're right.
So we want to ask her if she waives her right to be in executive session then before she goes.
Okay.
Just to, I don't anticipate anything coming up with Richard, but.
She asked me if, she said, do you just wait calling me, calling us back after the interviews for other questions? And I said, probably not, and after two hours, we probably would do that enough. But you're right, if they have personal. I have no reason to believe it would, but if they have some issues that they need bring up, I guess we maybe shouldn't ask them that question. So then we would have to go and do.
I suppose if they do, then we just have to. Maybe schedule the meeting, you know.
They should go on. Hi, hi, let's do that, if they do, I.
Like you said, it's probably unlikely, so.
Yeah, but if they do, you know, we can ask a question, and if chance of that will be a no, then. If not, if not was scheduled, a meeting would be safe to decision that there. That sounds good. Just make sure we. Um, and, yeah. Um. And okay, in reading through this. Yeah, is this, this fellow's never been a superintendent before?
Right. Just assistant principal.
Okay, all right, so I think we can get by, since it's right here. Employment of state and local government personnel, state local officials and supervisor personnel shall recruit, appoint, assign, train, evaluate, and promote. Personnel on the basis of merit and qualifications, so we can, we can probably knock him out. Just on the basis that he's never been a principal. Or superintendent.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I mean, I'm just, I I'm just saying legally, he might be able to do that, without regard, of course, to race color, religion, creed, religious ideas, only that. Physical and mental disability, if he has only been an assistant principal, and we have two candidates that have been principals. We have two that are more qualified than he is, right?
I I totally agree, I think if it was a seasoned superintendent, we would defer the decision until that interview, but it seems like a less qualified candidate.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, I think we've got the, I think that the law on our side, I hear.
Well, I mean, it was outside of the application window anyway, so I think that.
It was, except that I might have put it on that, I might have put it on the SAM.
Oh.
Without the that application, I I might have done that.
Okay.
When I talked to that guy, what, two weeks ago, is, you know, it wasn't quite passed the date at that time, but I didn't put, I didn't put that on there, I don't remember doing that. And oh, Cecilia might have, I do have, she, because she, she's the one that actually put it on there, I just said it up and he had to get out call or email her. But let's assume that. That we, that wouldn't even be an issue, it wasn't an issue, it wouldn't even need to be at this point, I don't think. If everybody's comfortable with that, that.
Yeah.
Basically, he's not. He, he's not a. Qualified candidate, and so there's no sense spending that time with them.
I mean, I really didn't want to tick all this down the road prior.
Yeah. We've got big decisions.
Besides from the other things.
Right, I mean, I mean, this decision is going to result in other decisions, so I think time's pretty important.
I, we, then our official, official management, we're just going to kind of let it go. That she, Tina is reading from the room. She made a copy for me.
You guys might, do you want to move that TV or everybody's here? That's good.
No, but it's not favorite. Who got the water, it's fresh, right?
Let me take.
Right?
They have to share the same water.
So we want to check with the issue that.
Always, I was just connecting the TV.
Oh, thanks, we made a decision.
We're.
Technically, an open meeting, how do we want to proceed with this?
Just leave, just crack it open.
Thank you, welcome. I think as we go along here, everyone will ask a question and we can scroll down the line. Laurel has some specific question, and so she will be asking those, it can be a choice, yeah, but. I think we will be just.
And there were just a couple of changes to.
Yeah, the ones that were, the ones that were sent to you, probably, they probably went from two twenty-three for that. Once I, once I had, we're just, we're good, you, you got the right one, because those are the ones. Okay. First question.
Do you want me to start on that?
Yeah.
Um, tells what you see as being the most important role of the superintendent, and tells how your work history has prepared you to become the next superintendent at the West Valley. Elementary district and middle school.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to step in just for a minute, and and in case some people don't know, I recognize most people here, but just in case, just want to introduce a little bit of myself to them, but okay. And so, I'm Tina Blair, and I am married, I want to introduce to you, my husband Kent Blair is here. And Kent and I, I'd like to say we live here in the West Valley, but we live in the East Valley, we live near Columbia Falls. And we live in Kent's family home that his parents built when he was young, Kent is a teacher in the Columbia Falls School District. We have three children who are grown now, I'd like to say they're raised, but I don't know when that part is totally over, but. You know, we've really had a great experience with them through their school years and experiencing the school through our our kids' eyes. And in the happenings with them, and a couple of them will have IEPs, or a few of them were involved in athletics. And in extracurricular, the band, and that has been a really neat experience for us, I think, raising them. We also live with my mother-in-law, who's ninety-four, and sometimes people ask what we're raising on the Blair, on the Blair Ranch, and. I would say that's a non-ergonomic. I would say that's a non-ordinary, and that's what we're raising. That's a whole different phase of life, and we really enjoy having the three generations at one house, so. And I just wanted to share a little bit of that with you, um. As far as the, the role of the superintendent. Is really as the CEO of the district, so the. Um, superintendent is managing day-to-day operations. Um, of the school. As, you know, supervision of fiscal responsibility. And as an educational leader, all of that under the direction of the board, the board policy and law. And. Also, always with the angle in mind of equality education and a safe school for kids. My experiences, I guess, some of my early experiences that I, I didn't write down, but early on in my life, I. You know, I worked in a meat department and I worked in special rap for REI. And I was a assistant to the. Vice President of Marketing on Big Mountain and was a line producer for a television show and. Produced a television show and worked for our family business, doing the books for landscaping our company. And I learned through that a lot about customer service. I, I learned to listen to people. And I learned the value of being an hourly worker. And, and living on a wage where every moment is, you know, worth. What you put in is what you're getting out of it, literally. Um, and. Those early years, I think, gave me, um, a really basis of a great work ethic. And I came to a point in my early thirties where I had saved some money and I could do what I wanted to do. More, what am I more passionate about, and, um. Always, I had just adored our school principal, Mr. Ross. So when I was young, I went to a K eight school and, um. For various reasons, I would be in the principal's office and, um. I, uh, just really. Really was in tune to what he was doing there, and I liked seeing the management part of it, the business side of school. And the human interaction and his time with the teachers and how he would help them with what they needed to do. And the community piece, so it was a pretty small town, but I felt like the school was the, the center of our community. And I saw how he kind of weaved that in, in and out, like, you know, um. Having people into the school and. Always willing to have that conversation a lot of times, I had to step out for those things, but I really. Liked what he did, so when I had a chance to do what I wanted to do, I went back to school to be a principal. I realized you had to be a teacher, which I totally get now. You must teach before you're a principal, um, which. Totally makes sense, and so I went to school, um, went to the University of Great Falls. And did part of their satellite, um, program, went to school here at F P C C for part of it. And then, um, got my bachelor's degree in education, ended up working. Um, in elementary education, ended up working at Peterson Elementary School. And, um, worked in first grade and fourth grade and. Learned a lot in, in that space and then ended up reaching out a little bit more and. Um, R T I or response to intervention was more of a new thing and, um. I went ahead and applied for a position within our school to work as a coach in that aspect, aspect. And then, um. Not long after that started my degree for my master's program for administration. And I was told that you not to get a master's right away or you won't get renewed or you won't reach tenure because you're more costly. And I went to the Assistant Superintendent Dan Zorn and he was like, no, he was like. Follow what you want to do and, and do well at it and you don't be afraid if it's worth it. They're going to keep you if you're good at your job and what you do, so, um. You know, I went through, I guess, eleven years. Eight years in the classroom and three years coaching, and then, um, position came open at West Valley School. And, um, my familiarity with West Valley was, um, born in Western Washington, but my father moved here. And he's a cable worker and he went to work on the Big Mountain. And now Whitefish Mountain Resort, and I first landed here in the West Valley on Sunday Lane. And I never attended this school, but my, my parents had divorced and I would be here in the summers and on vacations and I visited this school. And it was just a section of the school out by the street, it seems. But when I got to the point where I needed to go do student teaching, the school I was familiar with here was West Valley, so I came and. Did some practicums here and there was a new addition, I think I call it the two thousand edition, but I was like, whoa, this place has grown. And when it came time to apply for a principalship, it was because, um, of this building here. That, that the public had built, and I was really amazed by that, so. And working as a teacher and an instructional coach and as a principal here in the district. And that's where I have gained, um, experience that has helped put me for this position of being a superintendent.
Thank you. You know, I think we've got like, um, twenty. Three questions to go through here. I wonder if we should go ahead and say, if I might say that we get two more. What's your, what's your thought on that?
She's got the.
There will be short and long answers. That I'm going to invest in this, that I think. If you need to. There will be long answers and there will be.
Short answers.
Short answers.
I, I appreciate that, that was a great answer, I'm just. I'm just anxious to be sure and get through the walk along, so, okay, next question.
I promise.
That was great, though. Describe in some detail what your first hundred days would look like as superintendent. Was high school.
I've thought through that and, um. I work here and so I have had some experience here in the last eight years and, and if you don't mind, I'd like to hand up to you, uh, a superintendent entry plan. If you would accept that, is okay, so I did think through these things and, um. This, of course, where I had to be hired is, is definitely up for a review by you and, and. I would love in those edits and additions to this, but I wrote this in the lens of what, um. Some immediate needs I see that would be either geared towards the board and the district or the community. So, um, and also wrote them somewhat with a timeframe. Um, where, just from my experience, I felt that the items fit. Um, but like I say, that, that's all, you know, up to powers that be. And I'm interested in a program called Listen, Learn, and Lead. Um, I've never got to go to a formal training, but I've followed it. And just that really, in the beginning stages, even though I've been here, it's important for me to be out and about and to listen. And listen, listen, listen. And to ask essential questions. The essential questions are on the final page. And just finding out from people, especially where we are at with our budgeting and where our strategic plan is. And needs that we might have for growth. Asking people, what are the strengths of West Valley School District? What challenges do you see that the district faces? And what ideas or recommendations do you have that would enhance the district? And in the process where I'm meeting with teachers, meeting with leaders within the building. Whether that's a office manager, kitchen manager, but elementary principal, whoever that might be. Carrying that conversation on with them and with as many people as I can. And hopefully being able to come back in that three-month timeframe with some of that information to help with some of these other items that face us. So, um. Really, it. This plan just speaks to, um. Relationships, building relationships with the board. And what that working relationship would be, because I often think that the superintendent is the. The hands and feet of the board. The board makes decisions, accepts policy, and that. Superintendent is that person on the street that can help put those things into action. And I think being transparent and, and developing and growing current relationships and, and just. And again, the academics, the budget, and the planning, I think there's a lot to this. And I won't keep going into this, but I want you to know that I've thought about this. And that I created a plan that I feel like I could step into and enact and. Um, have it at an advantage of not having to learn everything about in the district, although I admit there are some things. That I've been working in my lens here in the middle school, there are definitely still things for me to learn. So that's a plan that I wish.
Hey, thanks, yeah. Now, why don't we skip? Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, um, so a big part of the superintendent's job is working on planning the budget each year. Please speak to your understanding of school funding and managing the budget with the district business manager.
With the technical side of that, that I, I'm sure that most of you have read up on and that. How our funding is garnered and then received, you know, based on. What, whether it's grants or whether it's created from mill levies and that we're receiving money from local taxes. Some county that we've got, state and then federal grants, and then all of those items that are received. Are then spent according to whatever the rules and regulations are of that much. And we all know that there's, you know. Little strings attached to every bit of it, and we have to be fiscally responsible. And I think it's very important to have a, a great working relationship between the superintendent. And the financial manager. And the business manager. We trust that the business manager through their organizations and their peers are learning to do the best that they can. And it's really technical, it's a big job. And I think the superintendent then is. Taking the strategic plan and the vision of the board and the people, because you represent the people. And taking that and conveying that with the business manager. The business manager is not making those decisions for the district. But they're definitely the one that knows what pots exist. And then also what can be slid between them, because you're hoping, and you should, be operating within your. Voted budget. Knowing whether you need to go to higher budget with or without a vote. And that business manager is aware of those pieces. I think the two of you are working side by side. And. The business manager. Also in the end can help in a way of knowing where can we put money into certain places. Can we reserve any? Can we rebuild reserves? And then, of course, that is affecting. Your bond rates and other things, so I think even though they're not an educational leader. They're definitely a key person to the school, to the board. And I think that it's good to be in lockstep in knowing that your ultimate goal is for the best outcome for kids. And following that board and the, the community's vision on that.
What experience do you have with the process of promoting and trying to pass school levies and bonds? How do you respond when they don't?
I've been on the positive end of that and the negative end of that, you know, spending several years in Palisbau. And, um, having levies passed and, and I, I just kind of took it for granted, I think. When I was in that position, I just, I just, the levies would come up and they just seemed to pass. And I came here, obviously, my work was created by a bond that passed here. And my experience was that bond was walking me into a moment of success for this community. And there's a height of that, like, everybody's thrilled and everyone's wrapped around this new thing that they created together. And then I've been in situations since I've been here where we've had levies or bonds that have not passed. Right? And I, I, the part of that that we works, you know, we have, uh, promoted with flyers, we've written mailings. Um, gone door to door, um. Had, um, videos created that we share out, tried to promote it in a lot of different ways. The response upfront with, boy, my staff. You know, it's disappointing to walk in that next day when something hasn't passed. And to reassure them that we're still here and we're still doing our best job. And that we're going to go forward. I mean, this, it, it is not the end. And nobody likes rejection, or that maybe, maybe it's not a belief in all of us, right? But we go forward, and. I, you know, I've read more and, and learned more in my classes, and I'm in the leadership program. Um, the University of Montana for superintendency, and I've learned more about it that. That most levies or bonds that pass, um, pass from a grassroots effort. The central office will not pass them. I mean, we can definitely need to give a solid why. Why do we need this? This is what we could do with this. The why has to be solid and that needs to come from the central office. But I do believe that. Successful efforts come from the community themselves. So were we to try again, I definitely would be encouraging us to find. Um, canvassing the community first and saying, is, read the room, is this the right time for this? Do we, we so much need this and this is the right time for this? And then looking for the people and community members that are willing to step up with the, the map. And help champion the issue. And, and those are just some of the responses that I have had and that I would have.
Thank you. Um, what do you consider to be the three most critical issues facing the superintendent and school boards today?
Yes, it's, we know there's a lot and. But I'm going to speak a little bit broad and then bring it a little bit more to here. I, I think that financing schools is tricky and getting trickier. So, and then as we're facing inflation and expenses are going up. And the funding for schools isn't maintaining at the same rate, I think that's a challenge for every district. And it also is affecting us more close to kids in the fact that it's affecting the ability to hire. It's affecting teachers and the choices to go into the preparation programs in the first place. When I, um, was first in hiring pools, we, um, on committees, we might have sixty people apply for a job. And then we saw that get to twenty and you might be at five now. You know, so I feel like the financing in the budget of districts and schools and for all positions. I just think that's getting tricky. I think that the social emotional side, um. The human side of school is difficult, and I think it needs careful attention. I think that, that the social and emotional health of our students and our staff members. Because if you're in the room and you're wounded and you're, you know, and you're trying to do your best for these littles, I think that needs to be tended to also. You know, so I think, I think making sure and that is a re-part of our strategic plan in our, in our, um. In our development, in our professional development, the part of that's included, but you have to put that into action and keep that into mind. And I think a final one that I see striking close to home is in this last legislature, I've never seen. So many bills or whatever you want to call these laws that came through and so many that affect schools, and I think that. It's something that, um, we need to do as a school, and regardless of what position I am in. All of us need to read that carefully and we need to, to. You know, put this in our, the, the plan there that could be done. That we need to see how it affects our schools and make sure that we're able to make the changes. We have to make the changes if they're law. And I think that it, it's actually a lot of things that will change us procedurally, how we do things. And so I see some immediacy for us in that, in that area, um, coming off of this legislative year. There's a lot of laws and changes coming down the pike.
Thank you. All right, Jeff.
All right, uh, give us some idea of how you judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent. How would you expect the board to evaluate, evaluate your work so that it was meaningful to you and helped you grow as an educator?
I mean, I, I would expect that the board would have goals and directives for me from the onset. I would expect that. You would have a formal tool that you would share with me upfront, that. These are our objectives, this is the vision, these are. Action items that need to be done and what we would like to see. And then, you know, I would like a check-in midway through the year on how that's going, um. And, and then, of course, there's that formal evaluation. I think that's most helpful to me is to know upfront what is, what is the job expectation. And. For me, a form of feedback that I also would take alongside that is, is, um, feedback from my coworkers. And, and those that I work with every day and feedback from parents and community members. You know, when someone tells me, hey, Tina, I noticed this was great. You know, and I feel like we have this culture that we can talk to each other in this way, you know, this, I like that you did this, and I think that was helpful because. And I, I can take that and, and put meaning to that and. And it helps grow me or affirms what I'm doing, um. I had to sit down or needed to. And was fortunate to sit with a parent, maybe when they're upset, and maybe I had to act on something. And maybe I didn't get it totally right, you know, um, but to be able to hear a parent say, I understood that you need to. And but to be able to hear a parent say, I understood that you needed to do blah, 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 but it could have been better by blank, blank, blank. And I think having that opportunity to grow from that, I don't enjoy that moment, but I appreciated the feedback. And so both formal and the informal feedback is, is what I like.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have spent the last several years working on school district climate and culture. How would you continue to build? Excuse me, no, I'm not even reading the right question. Uh, what has gone well with that? What areas need work and how would you continue to build upon the work that has been done?
In my early years here, we had kind of a mentor that worked with us named Ashok Men and, and he's passed on. But he worked with us, helped us with some really great team building. I, our, our vision or credo, you know, above and beyond is great. But he helped us as a staff put legs to that. So with him and with the superintendent at the time, we met in groups, large groups, small groups. And it really was generated from the staff. I wouldn't say it specifically came from us as administrators. We're responsible for it. But it really came from the staff. And that's where we formulated the shared beliefs, the warrior way, pieces that were for adults and for kids. And that really was taking hold when COVID hit. And I feel like, you know, after COVID, being sent out of the building, coming back to the building and then really some growth changes. A lot of people that are here now, were not here when we created the documents. I know that Richard and I were able to do some work with our staffs across the year and try to go back into them. But I think there's so much new stuff that we actually need to go back in, in, and create again. I would like to see us create again with the existing staff and with our existing programs and with our existing community. I think it would be worth, you know, going back into that. I promote that culture by, you know, with our leadership teams, by living out what are those, you know, shared beliefs or, you know, acting within what's in the compact, you know, going to the source. And believing that people have good intent. And then trying to bring that same thing down to our students at a kid level that we're kind, that we're responding in kindness, that we're persevering. And just helping, you know, through our counselors and through the teachers, bring that down to the student level. So I see it throughout the school. I don't claim ownership for all of it. I definitely feel a responsibility towards it. But I do think it is time to go back into that and, and re-envision.
Thank you. So our next question is, how do you view the current relationships between the elementary school and middle school? And what vision do you have for further unifying them?
Yeah, and I think that there's this great opportunity at being at a K eight school. And I grew up in a K eight school and I love that we're here on this footprint together, right? That West Valley is a long time entity. I enjoy walking through the halls and hearing the teacher speak to their kids. And knowing that, that, that care and the time that they're investing in that is bringing up just like a great product in the students, in their character and in their work and their work ethic. That when they come into fifth grade, that I can see the benefits of what's been invested into them. And the relationship between the two schools, I think that that we've been successful at giving the kids a little bit of an elevation at one spot. That we're all still here together. It's a K eight school at the end of the day. But that we have a spot for kids who are here nine and maybe ten years to have a little bit of a new experience, a new look, a little bit difference on the programs and a raise in the expectations, right? Less we get complacent along the way. I feel like through Jubilees and other things that and we can get together as a staff. I, I think it's important to, you know, have those all staff meetings a little bit more often than what happens right now. But I think of the difference, I think that, you know, should we be sharing out our weekly letters? Like, should, I think that it'd be beneficial for elementary and middle school to know, you know, I send out my, my letter mostly weekly. Richardson runs out too, but so that people know what's going on, even just as an event, what is happening on the other side. And I think also I don't know, I think that it, it is great and it is different. The two schools, you have an elementary and a middle school, and the two of them can have different feels, but I think it's important that we are all you know, just having a really good, solid rural education. And that people are cohesive about the, the outcome overall. I love that the kindergarten teachers come to the graduation ceremony, they're there at promotion. And I think that their investment in those kids from the very beginning till they walk out the door is a testimony to everybody's care for them throughout the process.
Define the roles in the negotiation process for the principals, the superintendent and the board of trustees.
Yeah, okay. We've just finished that. So, um, but really, the, um, the superintendent has the owners, along with the union presidents. One or the other, if they're gonna open it up to make sure they're giving notice of that by that January date. So I mean, there's some little hard pieces that, that have to be kept up and that the superintendent is there to supervise that process. And they're not there for making all the decisions, but definitely to make sure the process is rolling along and following and guidelines as it should. And I've seen it work in different ways. And but I think just as a facilitator, board members are there, there's usually from the committee of that to help with the advising from the superintendent and from the business manager being able to make decisions in that moment. So I, you know, board members have their strategic plan. Should know what's in line within that, what they can do within the budget and how it fits those different goals. And so they're just trying to do the best for kids with the tools that they have. Principal, as a principal, and I've always been invited to go. And I've been there in some ways as principal as a super teacher. The benefits that come usually from that teacher contract are the same benefits that I end up with, right? Or usually. And also just to be there as a sounding board or if there's a technical question, like how does this affect this? Then, then I'm happy to answer that. But other than that, the principal doesn't really have a role in that process. I've just been, you know, I've been fortunate that I care a lot about new teachers and how we're paying them and, and and the union let me present and, and the district I'm an item that's in the CBA that the teachers can gain units and, and do professional development on the learning hub and be able to move over one lane. You know, and when you're early on, if you don't have money to invest in university time or whatever, that, that it was a neat way to make sure they were in directed development, it would benefit the district and it would give them a chance to move over. And that's just an opportunity that I had because our union and because the district let me have a voice in that squad. But I've always been interested how it works. Because I do have a goal of being a superintendent and I like to see the mechanism of it all. Personal interest also is reason for me to be there.
In the world, do you want to take that also?
Uh, what do you think motivates you to be a superintendent, knowing that there can be long hours and a great deal of stress involved in this job? And do you think you may have interest in this position at West Valley long term?
You know, when I was writing my, a letter of interest, I, you know, of course, was bouncing this off of a mentor, you know, Darlene, I don't think, you know, Darlene Schottel, but she and was my mentor as a principal and still a person that, you know, I value her opinion. She's a former superintendent out of Kalispell and board chair for the state Board of Education. And she said, Tina, I know you have this desire to be superintendent, right? But right now, your board's need is, is this interim position and that's what they've expressed. And so I definitely have geared my petition or bid for this under that light, but I do have great interest in being a superintendent. I love West Valley School and our kids and our staff. And I would be honored if that became an opportunity. And if we felt that we had a great working relationship after this year between board and superintendent. I feel like that, that the advice I got was, but let that, let that be there and see how that's all working and be open to those opportunities. If we find that we're great working together, I would welcome that. If we find, hey, that's not the best fit, then I understand too for the needs of the district to step back a bit and let that search happen for who's going to come in next. And I value the school and I value the board's opinion and then would follow through in that. I think I lost myself on the first part of your question, which was
Uh, what motivates you to be a superintendent, knowing that there can be long hours and a great deal of stress involved with this job?
I'm a bit of a, a, a school junkie and I love back to school and I love fall and I love football and apples and I like being at school. People ask me what my contract is or what days. I don't really know. I hope I'm fulfilling it all because I do take time off and I find balance. But the, the long hours, I'm here, one of the first ones on campus. And I, I put in what I need to for the day and a little bit more sometimes and and our family is geared for this. And this is what, you know, a decision we made a long time ago. This was the route. This is what I wanted to do and this is where we go. So that part, the hours is what I do already and it's what I enjoy. So it's not hard to put in the hours. The stress, I think it's important to have balance and to, to, to alleviate stress. I have just found that taking a walk about, like I said, walking through, walking through campus, seeing what's going on and seeing the fruits of your labor, that, that alleviates stress. Celebrating with others, finding the, your high points, that alleviates stress. And I think just letting myself debrief when something goes down that wasn't that savory. And I would like to say that it's always a rosy job. But there's times that the job is really hard or there's a really hard issue. And I, I have confidence in people that I feel like I can debrief with. And, and, and put that into where it's in its place and, and be able to walk away from that, take the growth from it. And, and go on with what I love about my work.
Thank you. Um, how do you foster a good working relationship with the school board members and keep them appraised of what's going on in the school? Pried of what's going on.
We have a formal, a formal way. You know, as, as principals of giving that report and I think also as a superintendent of giving the, the board meeting a report. But there's also an informal way, and I wrote that in the plan, is that I would be interested in meeting with each board member and speaking to them about what their strengths are, what they felt like they were bringing to West Valley. And what their concerns and growth points were for West Valley. And just having a, a conversation about what their interests were, because when we're in this format, you're not really in that mode of where you can just kind of share personally, hey, this is my, my, my investment and and why, my why for being on the board. And then I think in those meetings, I would, I would ask, how do you, you know, what's your best form of communication? That you will respond to and, you know, what do you prefer? And also just finding out from the board, what is urgent and what is not to the board? At what level do you want that information? Like, you know, do you want to know? But somebody ran by one of our buses today and, you know, went past the stop sign and, you know, there was a small accident. I do want to know that, um, you know, today, the alarms went off for the school and a ball hit something in the gym. And then those are just kind of realistic things that happen, but I would want to know what's urgent to you to know that you feel you might need to be responding to. And then, of course, really critical issues that I obviously know would be going to the board chair and the assistant or the second to make sure that they have a chance to respond if they needed to. Should the media contact them? I would want them to know what's going on there. So, and at first my door is open, it's open now and it would be open as soon as Thank you.
Thanks. You are at a, a community event and or a school board meeting and the thing that makes a statement about the school district that is negative, not true, how would you handle this situation?
It really depends. They, where I was at is what they said. I mean, is it, it's dangerous or interest, I may respond in the moment, but many times you're in a public format, like if I was at a board meeting and our job may be to listen through. And whether I'm directly asked to respond, I may get to respond, I may not. But I definitely would want to address it. So usually when someone's got something they're sharing or it's, it's negative, then I'm interested in bringing them a little bit closer and finding out why they believe that or where that information come from or where it came from and what their interest is, is sharing that in this, this place, you know. Definitely if I'm out and about in public, I'm not going to address it right there. It might I, I just never know, like, if it really was actually dangerous or mean towards somebody, if I might just say that I don't know what's inappropriate or that's appropriate, you know. But I definitely would be staying within the, the protocols of what I should as a superintendent. And being mindful that for some reason they have a vested interest and I want to know what that is. And I want to dispel anything that's maybe not true or give them better information.
Um, improving instruction and teacher professional development are important aspects to school improvement. Talk about your experience with professional development for staff and how you go about deciding what type of professional development.
I think my earliest experience with, with providing it was as a, a coach in Kalispell and being part of the larger district system and, and getting to help plan and professional development. Our, our strategic plan, we speak specifically to the areas of of ELA and math and then socially emotional growth of students. So I think we're always looking back to the why of what we're going to do should be in line with what the district goals are. And I think your, that math and reading and those issues are always going to, I, I can't imagine something really different there. And planning for them, working with the, um, with the, you know, instructional coaches, the curriculum director. I'm here, I mean, I'm, I'm tied with my elementary principal because a lot of times what we are doing is for the whole district and as a superintendent, I still see that that, um, seeking out from those administrators, what's most going to benefit their teachers and then benefiting, of course, their students. And there's a lot of avenues that I, I, this is what I want to speak to is that and in the past, sometimes we have paid and brought in somebody who's the expert. And, you know, in that situation, you're definitely brought someone over many years that worked with us. And there's a point where you get from the feedback that you've got to be checking back in the feedback loop, where are we at on this? And is this still necessary? What are the outcomes we're getting from this? I think you always got to be checking back. And I'm interested in working with the, the, the CSPD, so the regional group for our development. And that's directed through the OPI and I'm on their board and, and get to hear through that, what opportunities there are that might be free. And or we could link up with another school. And we have to be more careful, have our ear to the ground a little bit more because the local co-op has disbanded. And from what I understand. And so just reaching out more recently to OPI and saying, these are some items that came down through the legislature, how is that being addressed? How can we get training and then making those contacts? So there's a lot of ways we could get it and receive that. But I think hearing from the teachers what they need, thinking of the strategic plan, you know, and then making sure that we're evaluating that we're getting the most for our, our money, if that's what it is. And also teacher time is so valuable. That to ask them to sit through a training that's not relevant or, you know, and, and to hear that afterwards, it's, it's really important to make sure that it's going to be relevant.
Thank you.
We've done about fifteen minutes, just so everybody knows. Okay, please describe your managerial style and what that will look like in your role as superintendent. In what ways do you display trust in your faculty's professional decisions?
My managerial style is to I think in some ways I'm a quiet leader. And that I, um, am a servant leader. And so I think my management style is to be aware and observant, know what needs to happen, be sure it gets accomplished. And, and empowering those around me to, to join in alongside or work to the best of their capacity to, to aid in that effort, making sure the right people are in the right places. And also being willing to listen and hear for those who want to reach out, do something different, move into a new position or take something on. And I think my style is that, that trust point is And I think my style is that, that trust point is to be able to let other staff members make decisions. Even though I have no problem making a decision, I appreciate more collaborator collaborative efforts and. That trust is letting people bring up their ideas, enact their ideas and take a risk sometimes that it might fail. But knowing that you work with people that are willing to put the effort in and are thinking and, and working hard for the same effort.
Talk about your specific style and dealing with negative behavior in employee and students, they community members. Please speak to specific time when you've had to deal with this and what was the outcome.
I'm a pretty empathetic person and so I usually want to know the why, like I think when someone's negative. What is behind that? Whether it's angry, um, are they frustrated? You know, are they misplaced? Um, what, what is going on for them? So I have to think about their why, about what is going on and then I want to know. The why and then how I can help that, you know, um, I don't usually hold things against people and. A specific instance. You know, this is a one kid, but then as many kids over the years, but when I think of in particular was new to our district. And right away, just ready to rumble, ready to fight with whoever, anybody. And I went back and first you go to their, their permanent file and you read what you can, find out what school she was from. And just went along and, and um, I don't want to identify anything too personal, but. Just by the history of this negativity throughout this child's school career. So when I approached the family, I could understand. How many times have they been approached by the school because their child is just out of line or, you know, so just knowing. How do I, you know, thinking through that? How am I going to approach them so that this isn't once again where they're maybe at odds with the school? And letting them know that I just want to understand their child and what works best for them at home. And then being able to enact that with her and over time, there was a lot of change and I'm. Still working with that family and, you know, you're several children down at this point. And glad for the investment I made to understand the family and the child and, and really it all just started with a negative, some negative behavior. You know, that has an okay ending, right?
Thank you. All right, um. Jeff.
Right, uh, what do you consider your most significant accomplishments as an educator administrator? Please be specific.
You know, coming into a school, into a K eight school and the. The citizens having built this building, I think is a great accomplishment with the staff of the whole. K eight building to carve out a middle school. Out of that, to create a middle school along with the staff. And have this great K eight culture, but to be able to have the opportunities for kids and some new traditions. And, you know, you're setting new norms and this more advanced middle level learner culture. I'm really proud to be a part of that. I don't think I'll ever have a chance again in my lifetime to be a part of something where, you, you know. One time the kids set off their phones in the lockers on um April Fool's Day. And I just thought, you know, on April Fool's Day, I'm waiting for the kid prank because the cultures that are coming up, there, there's going to be a prank. And that one time that, you know, just setting all the, the alarms off at the same time. Um, seeing them, you know, being able to put their names up when they get their name up on that ceiling tile. And that's a culmination of eight or nine years, but it's something that we do at the middle school. And I think it was really neat to be able to take, take something, you know. Not separating from a school, but creating a spot where there's opportunities for kids to grow up a little bit. Be within their athletics, you know, go through puberty and the growth and everything that happens in this space. It's not always that pretty. But for them to, to see how they care for each other and. And get ready, you know, for that high school experience. And I think creating that together with staff was a great thing and I'm really proud of the outcome.
Part of the superintendent's job is to recommend non-renewing teachers. The, the staff, students and a parent group are resistant to. The teacher being non-renewed. Explain the proper process that should take place prior to non-renewal for a non-tenured teacher.
Um, I would be sympathetic to the group that is not satisfied about this and would. Uh, if there's a proper way, I would give ear to that, but knowing. Um, that when we have a non-tenured teacher, being sure that along the way, we have gone through. Um, what's required, that they've had their evaluations and their observations and then knowing that by June first. If they're going to be non-renewed, they have to receive a, a letter stating that non-renewed. Um, knowing that as a superintendent, I would, um. You know, mostly the board doesn't know a lot in that situation. They just know it's happening. They've been advised of it. And this person, if it's without cause, they're just going to receive a letter stating that. Where people get messed up or tripped up is that, um. Giving a letter of renewal, renews the, the staff, the certified staff, not giving anything, renews the staff. So thinking you did not give them a renewal letter is going to not bring them back. That's not true. You have to actually give them a letter of non-renewal that's delivered by the superintendent on behalf of the district. I would follow policy and procedure.
Okay, thank you. What do you consider to be your greatest strengths as, as an administrator? And along that same lines, what areas do you think you need to grow as an administrator?
The growth, the growth, I, I mean, my level of experience, I feel like I have a pretty good base and there's very little that just blows me over. I have a pretty good base of experience and history and decision-making. And so I feel like the little weaknesses come up maybe more in the moment, you know, the gym floor is warped. And just, you know, say, who do we go to? You know, you're taking bids, you're talking to the insurance and learning in that moment. I think that sometimes. When I, you know, was aware of that happening, then I was putting on my superintendent lens, lens, like, why don't I know about that? What do I need to know? And more recently, you know, we had a window broken and, and I knew when that happens, we need to call. You know, the insurance company and we, from experience. And so I think little things come up. That I think need correction in a moment and I grow in that moment. I think that's the weaknesses. I, I think, uh, uh, my level of experience are situational a lot of times. Um, my strengths, I am. You know, it's hard for me to speak to strengths. Um, I had a, um. A fellow, a superintendent one time that asked me, is it better to be humble? Is it better to be wise? And I thought about it and I thought, well, if you're wise, wouldn't you be humble? And, you know. Well, like, well, that's kind of silly, but I think that I, when I said a hu- a quiet leader, I. I think that I'm humble and part of the strength is that, is that I can let others go forward. I don't, I don't mind being out in front and I love leading. And I feel like I have some born aptitude for that, but I think a strength is allowing others to lead too. And to have teacher leaders and student leaders and staff leaders. And I think um that I'm a very collaborative person and that I am a good listener and. Good. At engaging with others in a positive way. I think those are just great strengths. My managing side, I think I, I like to know what the expectations are, what are the rules, what are the laws? And I like to follow up things with detail, so.
Okay, thank you.
What do you feel are you the best, or why do you feel you are the best candidate for this position?
Can you tell me time, Ernest?
We're, uh, at six fifty-two, so we got eight minutes. Right, I think we could go a little. Yeah, if you find something meaty.
I know I get.
But. So we did add a few more questions, so it's not just funny. We're at, yeah, we're at eighteen and I think.
Okay, just want to be mindful of that and respectful of Richard's. Um. Your question again was regarding.
Yeah, why do you feel you are the best candidate for this position?
Um. You know, when I was teaching, I, I, that was, it wasn't my overall ultimate end goal, that I had the best seat in the house. As a teacher and you're right there with those kids. And I think that experience of teaching and understanding. Um, the dynamics of parents, sometimes multiple families and that investment into, into the children and being right there with that and. And the, the growth that I had from there, that's related to family expectations. Uh, you know, when I meet with families and kids and I, you know, and there are blunders that happen with these middle schoolers and I might be meeting with a family. But before their families might all be there, I talk to kids about the two expectations that their parents have, especially when they, when they bring their kids to school. And they're, you know, I, I, I think that their safety, parents are expecting physical and social safety. And, and then they're expecting the best education, you know, and um I learned in that position from there. But when I was there. I was reaching out of that spot and I was already collaborating with my fourth grade team and saying, hey. You know, this is kind of before this was the trend to do this, but I was like, you know, let's look at all of our data together. Let's not just, this is my costume, you know. Um, what do we do together? And I had a principal that I admired very much, Mr. Amphison, who didn't. He didn't want superstar teachers, he wanted superstar teams. He wanted you all to have power together, right? And so. You know, let's all get our data together and then let's share kids and let's divide them and see what's best, what, how can we bring their learning forward? I really learned a lot about, in that situation, about data and students and teachers. But I was reaching over by doing that data when the RTI job came up and then instructional coach. That, that I'd already been looking at that and I already been thinking about how teachers teach and children learn. And then I was able to. You know, take that learning and go up to that next position. Learn something very valuable in that next position because just because I have an idea and I think I know my why and I think I know it's best that you can't just put on other people. Um. Your idea, how you're going to arrange things. I really learned a lot about teachers and the autonomy of teachers. And what they bring, the strength they bring. And they might, it all might be a little bit different and their art of teaching matters. Because if you try to veer them too far out of their own, their own arts, they, they're not as effective. I just learned a lot about listening to teachers and their input about those students. I, uh, but I was reaching at that time and I was working on scheduling and I was working on. What can we do for our school and how does summer school look? Can we fund that? How do we get families involved? And so I was reaching out then to administrative duties. And when the position came open for this school, and there were several schools that came open, there were several, long time that I had my degree and didn't put out there for jobs. Um, and my principal finally, you know, the West Valley's open and he was like, that's a great place to be, that. That's worth stepping out, you know, um, and I valued what he had to say. I loved West Valley. But, you know, getting here, while I'm here, I've been training to be a superintendent and I have been. It's in little moments, but you know, I understand my job, but I'm still interested in how does this whole place work and how is it related to the community? You know, when I understood the kitchen might need help, but we all can't just be in there. I went and got my cert safe. Certificate and actually learned about managing the kitchen. The kitchen's not my responsibility, but it's right here in my building. And so in a way, by default, it ends up being somewhat your interest, you know. Walk-throughs, asking people in the office, what is it you're doing? What's important to you this week? How can I help you? How can I help you? Asking the superintendents, how can I help you? What is it you're working on? Is there a piece of that that I can experience or do? And I just feel like this whole time I have been studying, reading, learning, talking to other superintendents to prepare myself. Because I would like to be a superintendent and that's, I will be before I end my career at some point, you know, and that's. A, a ways out there for me, but it's something that I'm always reaching over to that next thing. And I feel that my experiences in all those places. And in those different jobs and then my, my, my preparation, of course, through the university, my mentoring hours and just my own curiosity. Has made me a good candidate for this. And I feel like also, if I didn't, if I didn't. You, you have a hard decision in front of you and you will do, you know, I trust that your, your why is there. You have a hard decision. But I think you're fortunate that you have Richard and I stepped forward. And I don't think I would be a good principal leader or a good school leader if I did not put myself forward right now. I don't think I would be doing the best for my dis- district if I wasn't recognizing I have that capability. I have that desire, I have the ability. Um, I have staff who's asked me and so I feel like there's, you know, staff members who've said. Why not you? But you should do this, you know, and that would benefit us. And if I didn't step up right now, I think I'd be remiss. I didn't. I think, I don't know about nineteen, but go on with. Past the time where one person go out and let Richard know.
Do we need to go to nineteen first? Uh, okay, what are your thoughts on collaboration and mentorship between school superintendents? And what opportunities, if any, would you like to pursue for yourself in this area?
Um, between superintendents of other districts? Um. I mean, definitely have the, 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 the Montana administrators, you have the superintendent's group, right? So there's Northwest Mass Meet. And I definitely had put that in my plan that I would intend to meet with them and be able to collaborate with them and. And, I mean, I already do with, with several, um, I also, you know. I think just reaching out to them and being purposeful about that and. And I've always found a lot of help out there and a lot of friendliness. And I offer, offer my, also offer myself to other people about, you know, if there's something I can help with, or something you want to know. And can I help with you? Can I, I mean, can I help you? You know, the, um. Through our leadership program at the university, I could have a mentor, which I would, I would do. And then I would join into a mentorship program and I would have a mentor that they assign that would help me here and help. And assist with that first year and. My mentor from my principalship has offered to mentor me through superintendency and I have um. A lot of trust in her understanding what my abilities are and where, um. That she can help me to grow and. Other superintendents, you know. I think everybody can get busy in their own space, but we can all learn from each other and, and grow and. Make a community link. I think a lot of it is important to have a, a community link and, and if you're the face of West Valley in any space. To be friendly and kind and, and outgoing and approachable. I think that wherever I'm at, you know, when I work with these other superintendents. That, you know, I'm representing our district.
Thank you. I'm just going to let Richard go. Perfect, thank you. Um, how do you plan to communicate with the public on matters of school concern?
I'm. I don't know that it would be acceptable to the board that I, aside from the, the reports, I, I. We used to be able to invest into a community letter and. I can't remember how often we did that, but I think it would be worth sending out the community a letter again, at least once a year. About what's going on with the school. I feel like everybody gets the mail. We, we talk about the different formats of social media, phone calls, you know. And I think I would like to get the information out to them in several different ways by having maybe a superintendent letter that is on the site. Um, another item I put in there, I'm not as, um. I don't mind being on camera. I would maybe need some coaching in some areas on being on camera. But I would also like to do a piece where just either doing a principal's cast and doing a few minute piece that's just updating people. And I think, um, just in several different ways to let them know what's going on, but to make sure that we're not contacting them. Just when we're in need, that we're letting them know what we're benefiting from right now and. It's one of the things I like about with our, our staff already is having them make regular contacts and encouraging them to call. I think we're getting away from phone calls a bit. People are afraid to make phone calls, but. Um, you know, even the, the hundred positives on the hundredth day to just to stop and think the people that are giving input to the school. Living a lot of different ways and I would be interested in hearing what the board's ideas were or expectations in that realm and then meeting.
Thank you. Uh, okay, superintendents have a great deal of work to accomplish that requires office time. What level of visibility within the school and classrooms do you envision for yourself in your role as superintendent? And what will that visibility look like for you?
Visibility. It, even whether it's just visibility or accessibility, right? So I think being accessible to staff. Always mindful about that, that there's chains of command and there's direct routes that things need to go in for the efficiency of a school. And such a large, a large production here. But I think always being open to listen to staff and for them to know and that when I'm here. Come see me. I guess that's where I'm at right now. If it's very, uh, something is time pressing, then I think something so simple is, is. You have to shut your door, maybe letting people know, you know, working on whenever should be finished at this time, you know. You have to value your own time to get your job done. You can't, I can't promise in every minute that I would always be. You have to value your own time to get your job done. You can't, I can't promise in every minute that I would always be accessible. But I, I try to get here early to be here for staff. I don't mind staying later if someone said that's what they need and I encourage people. Uh, just if they, if they don't feel hurt as one, then bring someone else with you. For some reason you didn't think I got it, then you know. Bring someone else with you if you need to and. Definitely, you know, being mindful of union needs. Sometimes the union comes forward and I've been through that with an administrator that they will come along with somebody. And, and I think letting people know, hey, if you need support person too, that that's okay to. You know, every, it doesn't, it doesn't make, doesn't put you on the defensive and it shouldn't if you're going to come along with some, you know, with you. So welcoming also not to staff, but their representatives.
Thank you.
I would say to go into where we're at. Some of the best conversations happen not in, not in the office space, but in the staff spaces.
Thank you.
We'll go back to nine, right? Are there any questions you wish we would have asked you? I felt like you've been really thorough to the position and, and, and been graceful giving me this, this time and. And I guess on that, do you have any questions for us? I do. Before I ask you this question, I want to thank you for, for. Entertaining my. My application in, in. And it's an honor to be here. I get emotional, but I love school and this is, you know. It's part of your own personal dream to sit here and I was excited to be here tonight. So thank you. This is fun and. It's exciting. And my questions for you is, you know, with that same enthusiasm, what is it that you're proud of? At West Valley School, what are you proud of? About West Valley School?
Shall we go one by one?
Or I'm not sure that that isn't like a. I mean. Because once again, if we do this, then we're gonna have to do that.
Well, he can ask those questions too.
My interest is that. In both ways, you're, you're interviewing and I'm interviewing. I mean, I, I should know pretty well like what my intention is before I even sat here, but it really does interest me. When you say, how do you want to relate or get to know the board? I really do care about what. What's, what's making you proud about this space right now?
Um, for me, it's the education that my children are here and receiving from all the wonderful teachers and staff and the community that. West Valley is, I mean, that's like, I say here, it's, it has a special place in my heart and I want to make it the best we can for the kids. That are all here.
I think I'm proud of the reputation, West Valley, and we've got people moving here to move into West Valley School. Specifically and that's. That's a tradition that we can be very proud of and we're clearly part of it.
Same reasons as before, like I moved into this district specifically so that my kids would receive an education here. There's a longstanding history of excellence and I think we're facing a lot of really big decisions. Big challenges, but at the same time, I think we have such a treasure. And the community that has been created here and the teaching staff that we have and the administrative staff and. Literally the entire staff. Uh, and I want to see that that is nurtured and grown as much as possible.
Yeah, just building on that. I mean, obviously the education's exceptional. I think you guys have all done a great job with that and I. I really appreciate as a, as a parent, you know, when I come in, just the accessibility that we have as a parent at school. Um, you know, I, I, I appreciate that I can, you know, come check in and walk in and walk and get my. Kid, you know, or go to his classroom, et cetera, and. And as what, you know, walking through the halls, all the smiles that you get and hellos from teachers. From kids, I, I see, you see the little lines of. You know, kids walking through and they all have smiles on their faces and the teachers have smiles on their faces and it just feels like a really positive. And open and wonderful environment. And, and again, that's, you know, we, we sought out West Valley. You know, early on to move here specifically for our kids as well. So it's, it is a destination that people want and we just want to. Make sure that that continues into the future because that's really important for all of us that have kids here and all of us that live in this community.
Thank you.
Turn up a little bit. I'm not joking.
Thanks, Tina.
Hey, thank you.
Take your hands just.
I would, thank you. Nikki, someone. We did. I'm like a guilty waters ever.
Okay, Richard, thank you. Um, we're gonna go around and, and ask question each of us. We have a few. She has a few specific questions, Laurel, that you have out of order. We have a few questions that we'll ask that weren't on the. The, the form that was sent out and Laurel will ask those. And a few little amendments, but basically they're the same questions that you got emailed. So we'll start with. Uh, Stephanie and number one.
Okay, um, tell us what you see as being the most important role of the superintendent. And tell us how your work history has prepared you to become the next superintendent of the West Valley Elementary District and Middle School.
I think the, um, you know, overall goal of the superintendent. Really is basically the overall goal of any leader of any institution and it's the best utilize the resources that it has. And it's kind of your job to figure out what those resources are and how to best utilize them to make it so that it's a functional place, but then also. Make sure that you create an environment where people want to work. I think that's the biggest thing. The most important thing I think a leader can do is see the potential in people and get them to utilize it to the best way possible. Because that benefits everybody. I think. You know, when you look at the big picture down, there are so many people with varying degrees of skills and abilities and it's kind of your job to. Put those pieces in place. It's kind of a game of chess, really, where you've got to kind of come in and see. Really what you have and who you have and then kind of determine where those best pieces fit. And then with all that in place, there's inevitably going to be things that shift and move. Because we're obviously a field that works with people and people are not consistent nor are they perfect. And so you have to kind of, you know. Basically be the one who looks at that and, and with it also you delight in people you work with. So kind of accepting that there's challenges to it and there's challenges to everything, but that. Your, your job is to be the steady, you know, petty kind of, that you calm, you're collected, that you approach everything with. You know, the team in mind and not yourself in mind. Because at the end of the day, we're, we're here to promote the growth and development of people and that's our product. So that's what we have to produce.
Thank you.
Okay, describing detail what your first one hundred days would look like as superintendent at the school.
Give a state of the school address on TV, I guess. First hundred days, I think. Really, I would get to know the middle school a little better. Um, I think that there's just been so much turnover and so much change and so much growth. It's kind of forced. Us to, you know, be a little bit apart than it was when I first got here. And I think there's no fault of anybody's. It's just a factor of, of growing pains. And just something that happened. So I would work really hard to try to, you know, um, get to know the staff better. You know, as humans first and you just get to know their strengths and weaknesses and. What, what everybody has to offer there. Um, there's a lot of people I really don't even know in the middle school. And so there's, there's opportunity there, I think, for me to dig into that. It would also be to, you know, um. Put my nose in policy, which, you know, is something that as an administrator so far, I've been lucky enough to have, you know, a lot of. Help and, and a lot of, uh, you know, assistance with, with looking at that. And recently I've had a lot of experience looking at policy and codes and, and how they. Relate to, you know, different things. And so that's something that, that I would work really hard to do. I think it would be my goal in the first hundred days, especially in an interim position, to let, to give people a sense of comfort. And a sense that we are in the right direction or going in the right place and we have to make sure that. That that is the same place and that it can be a whole bunch of different goals and different people. And it has to be. Collected, if you will. And so that, that's what I would do my very best to accomplish in a hundred days.
Thank you. All right, Jeff.
A big part of the superintendent's job is working on planning the budget each year. Please speak to your understanding of school funding and managing the budget with the district business manager.
I can tell you, no one understands the school funding. Yeah, no, it's, it's ridiculous, but I will tell you that I do have experience in budgeting. I do have experience working, you know, with, with the school budgets, obviously, you know, as part of the, you know, the team that. Went out and tried to pass, you know, levies and, you know, bonds and. Things like that and I had to work with, you know, Cindy Foley a lot to teach me about it when I first, when I first got here. So that knowledge is there. I also have a bachelor's degree in business. Got experience working, you know, with that and, you know, in business, no matter what you study, um, if you study accounting, it's basically where you've been. If you study management, it's where you are. If you study finance, it's where you want to be. And so. Um, essentially, you know, with, with all pieces in that you're projecting, you're looking at, you know. Uh, year to year, you're comparing things, you're looking at percentages. The, the things and then really it's kind of like, like I said first, where. The job of the superintendent is to look at, you know, what skills people have to offer, best utilize that. It's also financially to look at what you have, you know, and. Where to best spend that. And that's kind of the science of it. I think the people is kind of the heart of it. And that's really what attracts me to, to it is that it's kind of an art and a science. But I do have expensive sense of knowledge of looking at budgets and. How to, how they work and different allocations of money and how, how that, you know, works. Money comes in different pockets and you just have to. The dive in and do it. It's, it's not fun work for most people, you know. But it's, it's worth it, I have to be there.
He's definitely the next one. Um, what experience do you have with the process of promoting and trying to pass school levies and bond? And how do you respond when they don't?
Ooh, I get mad. I get really mad. Yeah, I, I mean, I've been here since twenty seventeen. And in every year I've been here, except COVID, we've tried to run some sort of bond or. Or a levy. And I think. The, the, I mean, that's really kind of the end all be all for what, what we need to do next year and the years coming is to figure out some way. To pass one of those things. And. You know, whether it's been working with the finance team, we tried to pass the bond to sitting down with Cal just one on one. When we tried to pass the bond to. Discussing it with, you know, teachers that, that, uh, you know, are in the building every day and in the trenches. One thing I really don't think we've done a good enough job that, and I'm not saying we as West Valley School, I'm saying we as a. Field of education in general, let's tell our story and we don't really, we, we are people. That tend to be modest. We. Are people that tend to not want to brag or boast, but we really do a heck of a lot of good stuff for kids and. We've done it with not a heck of a lot of resources. And I think that. People in the community. Need to understand that. I mean, as a member of the community, I would want to understand that too. But I think some tough decisions are gonna have to be made pretty soon, um, about what needs to be cut. If they don't pass, to get the harsh reality out to folks that, you know, you've got a great school here. The community should be proud of it. Or firmly believe that communities are a reflection, our schools, excuse me, are a reflection of the community in which they are. And, um, we've got a really good thing going and if we want to keep it that way. We're gonna have to do, do something to keep it that way. So I, I do have experience in doing that. You know, it hasn't worked out really from a lot of, a lot of schools recently, you know, I think by two thousand and seven. It's the last of the high school levies and Cal's though and us. That's, I think we should be proud of moving things around to make it work the way that it works now. Yeah, that's, that's a really highlight one that we've really got to work together to figure out how to first tell our story and. Do it in a way that resonates with people, especially, you know. People who send their kids here every day and trust us with it, but also. You know, even more importantly, the people that drive by it every day with no personal attachment to it. You know, it's a big ask to go to someone's wall and take some money out when they have absolutely no. You know, personal connection to it.
I, um, what do you consider to be the three most critical issues facing superintendents and school boards today?
There's only three. I, I would say first of all, funding. A high, far, far and above the biggest challenge, I think. Teacher retention is huge. I think, uh, that's going to be a challenge that we face moving forward. Whether that be here or anywhere really. And I think, uh, another big challenge is the, the national narrative out there. That we have to combat and the schools really, quite frankly, if you want to be honest or not, looked upon right now as, as being the very best. For whatever reason or not, there could be some good points there, but there does seem to be reaction to schools, especially after COVID. You know, we, we've got to. Challenge that really or, or accept what is wrong and work together to solve it. But, um, we really can't do it without first two things, which is funding and teacher retention. So really what we have to explain to people is that, you know, we're, we're, we are not malevolent. That our, our intentions are, are, you know, obviously good, a good date. And that, uh, there, there are cracks and bruises as there are in every field. But that, um, we are the most visible one, I think, in a lot of ways. And it's because everybody, for the most part, is at your school. And they have their own version or vision of it and they have their own trauma with it. Some have wonderful experiences, you know, like myself, but I really feel like. To, to, I mean, to, to move forward, it's going to be incredibly challenging, not for just superintendents. Principals, teachers, but just for every single person in the building. You know, figure out kind of how, how do we fix funding? Is that at the legislative level? Who knows, I mean, is it at the passing of every, every year until we, we die or. You know, teacher retention, we've got to make this an attractive job, you know, and right now. You know, it'd be a lot of points worth not, quite frankly. You've got lack of funding, but it's, you know, increasing. You know, um, I guess expectations. So, you know, really. You know, and, and the pay isn't phenomenal. It's, it's in fact, I think Montana is pretty darn low in teaching, starting teacher salary. Lowest, yeah. And luckily enough, we got some pretty to look at, but I mean. If, if we didn't, and we didn't have those things, we would be in the same boat that Eastern Montana is in or the thousand teachers short. To start the school year. There's a reason for that, you know. And it's. That's not gonna be solved overnight, but. You know, we are blessed to live where we live and to have what we have. And so, you know, we do kind of, don't. See it, be here yet, um, as, as I guess, as, as a, as dire, but we will. If, if we don't, um, do something and I'm not talking about five years. I mean, ten, twenty years down the road is, is really what I'm thinking about there, but.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Jeff.
Right, uh, give us some idea how you judge your own effectiveness as a superintendent. How would you expect the board to evaluate your work? So that it was meaningful to you and helped you grow as an educator?
I think that's been one of my strengths professionally, since I started teaching, that I am pretty, pretty lucky of myself. In some ways, almost too much, but I think. Really, I, you know, don't know what I don't know at this point, you know, and. In some ways, almost too much, but I think, really, I, you know, don't know what I don't know at this point, you know, in this position. And so I would really lean on the board, you know, a little bit and to kind of have for feedback. And would lean on members of the staff and teachers and, and, you know, have conversations that, that are, you know, hey, how's it going, what's happening? But I really wouldn't, you know, honestly, going forward through it, I wouldn't really be, I mean, I would be open to anything. Oh, I mean, it's, I would judge myself pretty fairly and pretty hard on myself for the most part. But I think that really the, the relationships with the board is about most important. Because if you really, you know, if you don't have that, then it's really hard to, to make any common goal. So I think that it would be consistent, clear communication, that's a feedback loop, you know, that it's not to where it's, it's a not want to do, but it's something that, that is a wants to do. I feel like also one of my strengths in that is, is open communication. I like to communicate with everybody every day and always be available and approachable. And so if I started to see in, in me things that I didn't normally see professionally, that I would kind of question, maybe it's not going the right way or going forward. So I would just look for patterns in my behavior in the past and apply them to what's happening now. And if they didn't match, then I would know something is wrong. And right now, I think one of the strengths is that, you know, I provide an approach, approachability, I guess, maybe the right word, but a place to go to solve a problem, not, you know, create a problem, but I don't go looking for problem. But, you know, I've, I've always viewed my role as a principal with, with teachers as us versus an issue. Not, you know, like the issue being biggest thing. It's always been like, how do we solve this? What can we do together to make sure that it's not about you and me that has an issue, but it's about how to best help the situation? And I, I've been able to do that fairly effectively. I think, you know, one thing I can remember is working with Neelia Solberg early on here, when she was out there doing some writing training, she's a trainer that goes around and helps with that. She said, Richard, the one thing about you is you are a straight shooter. I can tell you that. And, and that's really kind of what, what you need to be sometimes is you just have to be honest and say, this is why, you know. And to, to most, as most, I guess, as far as you can, because there are certain times you can't, but you just have to also build that trust with people to know that if you make a decision or something happens, they trust you, that was the right one. That was best interest of the situation.
I, I've never said it.
We have spent the last several years working on school district climate and culture. What has gone well with that? What areas need work? And how would you continue to build upon the work that has been done?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was lucky enough to be here my first year when a show from the Night Nation came and worked on some culture building stuff with us. Where we created the shared beliefs and a compact for excellence and, you know, the warrior way. And, you know, things happened, you know, outside of our control, like a global pandemic. And unfortunately, we, we lost some of that stuff. And this year, my, my goal was to go back to looking at those documents because I saw how effective they were. And, you know, I, I did it not because I, I was like, you know, we should look at those documents, you know, we should do that. It was more of like, I like how that was when we had this, let's do that again. I think that it was really meaningful to do that as a staff. We, we kind of did it from scratch, really, too, to be honest. And we had some emails here and there from a show. I had a file that was, you know, pretty thick for a show, but it was a lot in there that was just, you know, information about it. There was no guide like how to do this. So we, we rebuilt our shared beliefs as an elementary school, through our leadership team, and then working with the staff and staff meetings. To define, to define our shared beliefs again, we made them simpler, we made them clearer. You know, and so more of a meaningful document, I believe. We looked at then the compact for excellence again, where we took the best self and best work. And we made it again, a usable document that works for us, so that we can redefine some of what that means and get back to being our best selves and doing our best work as, as a staff. I think it was pretty successful because we, we had, you know, some, some rocky things come up this year, it's pretty rough seas. But I feel like, you know, our ship was really able to storm it and get through it. And we saw the, the light at the end and we went for it. And, you know, not to say that some sails weren't broken. We had, you know, some issues, but I think we did a great job as a staff and honestly, we, we have a great culture. Really, we do. I feel like a lot of that is just the people who, who I'm lucky enough, blessed enough to work with. So, yeah, I think that we have a good culture, and that's, that's going to be something that I strive to keep going with.
Thank you. No, we're at seven thirty four. How do you view the current relationships between the elementary school and middle school? And what vision do you have for further unifying them?
Yeah, I, I think I spoke to it right away. I think I can see that there's, you know, a definite, just a natural split. Not that I should, wouldn't say split. I, I would say that there's a natural, you know, growing apart just because of growing pains. I feel like that, I mean, the middle school and the elementary are connected by a hallway. I mean, how cool is that? I mean, it's, it's also probably the challenges too, you know, because we are so connected that, you know, there's a lot of things that, that need to be pulled in, you know, both directions that, you know, a lot of other schools really don't have to consider. Like scheduling, even for example, I mean, not a lot of elementary schools need to depend on the middle school's schedule and vice versa. Not a lot of elementary schools need to depend on the middle school staffing and vice versa. So there's been some definite challenges with that. Then I think just in, you know, you, you may, you have, you know, COVID when we all went home, you have, you know, and then kind of had to just live life via computer. And you have the growing that we went through during that time too, with, okay, I'm coming back the next year with masks. You can't go anywhere, you can't see anybody, you can't touch anybody, but you know, I mean, that's, that's a lot too. I mean, you've got to stay in your room and, you know, kids can't even go to specialty or whatever. I mean, not so, really, I mean, that's another year. And then you've got the next year, which is incredible growth, tons of change, and several pillars of this will leave. And so people were really struggling to know what to do and where to go, and they went to where it was safe. You know, that, I don't blame anybody for that. I mean, yeah, I, I just feel like it was a natural, natural component of what happened to us in, in schools in general. But I would love to see it get back to where it was. I think it was really kind of, it was kind of neat to, to see us do the jubilee. I unfortunately got a doctor's appointment on the only day that they were gonna do it, but it's, it's gonna be something that I strive to do. Is this, I guess, as genuine as I possibly can, because I think sometimes it's forced to. And I would work to see, you know, how can we make this a genuine experience and not like a forced, like we need to be together because we were in the past and, you know, it's a lot easier to do when you're three hundred kids versus eight hundred, you know, or whatever. You know, when you're ninety-five, a hundred staff members, hard to do. A lot easier to do when you're, you know, a smaller elementary school with thirty, forty staff members, whatever. So, but I, I think if it's meaningful and, you know, and, and I think it's an awesome thing. I think it's pretty special really to have, you know, a K to, of this size still as close as we are, you know, even.
Thank you. Okay, Stephanie, the next one.
Define the roles in the negotiations process for the principals, the superintendent, and the board of trustees.
Yeah, I mean, that's a big one. I think really, so the specifically, I think the goal for the superintendent is just to provide support to everybody. To number one, support the teachers with what they want, with also knowing the truth behind those wants. I've always kind of seen that role as, as, you know, I mean, I don't mean this anyway, but like the kid asking mom and dad what they want for Christmas. And you kind of got to know, well, we have this budget, and I can't get you that, but I can get you something like that. Or we can work to, you know, see how I can give you that in some way. I am a firm believer that, that it's, it should be cordial. I absolutely do not feel like it should be a contest or contentious. I feel like if any meaningful work should be done, I think it should be about the kids first. And foremost, I think the role of the principals is just to provide that conduit, which is what I tried to do very best I could, is know the needs of the staff, know the needs of the kids and try to, you know, be there when I needed to be there and when, you know, applied. And to just let that process take its place. I've, I've found that you can get a lot further by not forcing things and not forcing people to do what you want them to do. It's kind of, this is kind of surprising what, what you can get accomplished if you don't care who gets the credit. And I think that would be my goal is to, you know, just have an open dialogue with, with people. I think that, you know, within reason, it's, if there's no, there's no really reason that it has to, to be a negative thing. Because really, if you know enough to explain the why not, the people here are not going to lash very bad. They will understand, they're smart enough to get it. So you have to kind of know, I mean, just like in, in anything, how to teach it and then how to follow through. You know, it's kind of like, when, when you don't know what's going on, you don't know the school funding, you don't know what's going on. And you, you don't know where to start, you don't know why someone does what they do. But once you are, like on the other side, once you're able to teach it and understand it enough, they're, it's going to become clear. And then it's not magic, you know, then it's not like, poof, look what happened or, you know, oh, we did this, and then nobody knows why. So I feel like, yeah, did I answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey Laurel, do you want to do number nine then?
Yes. Okay. Question nine, what do you think motivates you to be a superintendent, knowing that there can be long hours and a great deal of stress involved with this job? And do you think you may have interest in this position long term?
I have no idea. Zero, zero, zero. I don't know why I wanted, okay. I, I am interested in it because I feel like the timing is right. I feel like, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity, this interim position, to, you know, put my feet in, dabble, and, you know, if I love it, jump into it. I am interested in it long term, yes. To be quite honest, it is, so, I mean, I've thought about it before, and the reason I, I didn't is because, you know, it's, it's a kind of, it's an intimidating thing to jump into it, you know, knowing that, I mean, this is my thirteenth year. You know, and they've got quite a, quite a long haul left and not even halfway. And with superintendents, you know, they, they can come and go, they, you know, they don't stay very long. So to be completely and open and honest and vulnerable, that's, it's really kind of been a big reason why, just because it's, it's, it's pretty scary to think about. You know, I've never thought about the future as tomorrow, I've thought about it for ten years tomorrow. I think I was forty when I was five, but I think, I really think that it's something I am interested in long term. Especially here. I, I, there really, I have deep ties to this place, you know. I live here, I think I moved into my forever house here in the district. I think it's about, as the crow flies, you know, fifteen hundred feet away and two thousand feet maybe. And, yeah, my kids go here. I've got a first grader and a third grader next year. And, I mean, they develop friends and roots and, you know, we are, my wife's family lives here in the district. And, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big family. And, and I think, I don't know, I think it's a pretty special thing to have where you, you know, have a superintendent that lives in a district that's not, you know, huge, you know, like in Las Vegas, the superintendent has to live there, right? But when you're, you know, West Valley, Montana, Calistow, you know, I really definitely saw myself as here forever these last few years. I really thought, wow, you know, this is something special that not a lot of people have. I mean, I could, you know, make, I mean, I make it to work in three minutes. I mean, that's not an exaggeration. So, you know, for if it's icy, so I think, you know. Yeah, I don't know. I think it's just a kind of a special deal. And I think it's, it's, it's in a time where it needs, needs some help too, really, I think so. I'd love to be a part of it.
Hey, how do you foster a good working relationship with school board members? How will you keep school board members apprised of what is taking place at the West Valley School District?
Well, again, I touched on that the relationship is above most important, you know, with everything, but especially a school board and a superintendent. Because, you know, as I'm learning, it's, it's a lot, like, there's, there's a lot of stuff that, that is going on behind the scenes. And a lot of things that you have to, you know, to do that, that are easy to do and, and that you need a lot of help and support in. And I would, I would really work to communicate, you know, as much as I didn't annoy you guys. And I mean that sincerely, because I feel like I, I hate, I, I hate the, the, I guess, the modus operandi or the, the style of, here's what's happening, shh, don't tell anybody. I think that's, it doesn't work, or hey, this, this, Stephanie about remember, but don't tell them, you know, I, I hate that. So I would be more open to, you know, communicating honestly, openly. You know, I've never, I've never honestly received that feedback and felt like that person, you know, was, you know, in a, in a wrong place or, you know, it's, it's always for me, you, you're not going to get anything done unless you're on the same page. I feel like the, the board's in a, a great spot to, to really work together, you know, I really do. I feel like it's a, it's a good time to figure out for this next year, you know, and it is, it's, it's only a year position, right? And to figure out like, you know, how do we keep the lid on? But, yeah, I would work to foster very positive, very open relationships with the board.
Thank you. Welcome, again.
Hey, you were at a community event and or a school board meeting, and a patron makes a statement about the school district that is negative and not true. How would you handle it?
That hits home. I think, really, you, you have to be in that moment, that minute, you know, you, you have to rise above that. And I think you have to, you cannot react to that. You just have to, you know, kind of, I mean, just have to go with it. And, and you, you know, it's, it's a frustrating situation sometimes. Because you want to say things, and you want to, but it's not appropriate to do that. And I feel like, you know, if you're, you know, not to say that you can't say anything back, but, you know, just ignore them or whatever. But to have that positive dialogue and let, I think people like to be heard. That's really all they want to do is to be heard. And I think if you hear them, listen to them genuinely, then I think they, they understand that. And I feel, I feel like they would respect you more if you did that, if you pointed out where they're right possibly. You know, it might be hard to do that, maybe you wouldn't, but I feel like it's, it's never appropriate to respond, you know, in a, in an equal way, you know, as, as that person. Because you cannot, you know, control others and you cannot, you know, make them do what, what you want them to do. But you can't control your response. And you can, can basically know that it's a person, you know, to, to anybody or to myself. The stakeholders that are, that are in the school. That I would, I would also kindly respond if I had a chance and then educate if I could and to provide maybe a different perspective of looking at a situation. Really difficult to do sometimes, especially when, you know, it's in the heat of the moment or depending on how, you know, big the reaction is. So, yeah, I think it's, it's really important though, that, to kind of see that, you know, that, that big reaction usually means a big feeling. And if you don't acknowledge that big feeling, then And if you don't acknowledge that big feeling, then it's only either going to make the feeling bigger. Or it's going to make the feeling last longer. So I, I feel like, you know, that's where just a lot of dialogue needs to happen to, you know. Telling our story and making it so that that doesn't. So, yeah.
Please Stephanie, improving instruction and teacher professional development are important aspects to school improvement. Talk about your experience with professional development for staff and how you go about deciding what type of professional development is needed.
Yeah, I think really, from my experience, it also depends on what materials you have to, what you have access to. I think, you know, one thing that we had to do when I was first here was pretty straightforward and it was trained curriculum, you know, and how to use it. You know, there was training on teaching reading, you know, for a couple of years here that. We, we knew that we, with this new curriculum, we had to also know how to supplement. I always feel like, you know, teachers can benefit from. Training and special education, I feel like it's a, you know, vastly overlooked field. Our being a field, but part of of what we do and I feel like if teachers understood it a lot better and principals understood it a lot better like myself, I think it would be best for students. I feel like, you know, professional development is also kind of determined by what grades and areas. Subjects you teach, I I feel like as a, as a teacher myself, you know, I always rolled my eyes when I walked in and. You know, the, the training didn't apply to me at all, you know, and that's kind of like, well, shoot, I mean, you can't avoid that, right? I mean, that's. But you really try to find where the net you cast gets the most fish. And I, I think that that also takes conversations with people, getting out and about and being a visible leader. And knowing that that they will tell you what they don't know and about and. If you have a relationship with people where they can be vulnerable with you and trust you, then they can say, I don't know what I'm doing here. And not try to just impress you or say, oh, hey, I don't. They'll, they'll come up to you and say, you know, I think we need training in this area. I would also lean on, you know, the, the instructional coach. Here, Tanya Jewett, I mean, she's incredible at looking what parents need, especially teachers need. And, yeah, use, use people to to kind of know that, to come to me, hey, what do you, what do you need, what do you think you want? But, yeah, and also we've done training like with with Terry and Level Logic, we've done, you know, trainings with, you know. Positive behavior systems, and I really feel like we could. Do more with the MTSS model, the training and approach, I think we're getting there. I think we're, we're, uh, still got quite a road ahead with that. But when I, when I first got here, there was not a lot of knowledge of what MTSS was or. RTI or PBIS or maybe the other alphabets who things you can make. So, I think that really those, those become. More aware, you know, the longer you, you are. Yeah, in a situation you're working in. Yeah, I feel like, but if, if you can find someone that can find the right trainings, the, the right times. For the right people, man, that person's going to be like a. Wow, you can write your own book to. Retirement talent, if you can do that. Yeah, I mean, it would be pretty, pretty special, someone who could do that. Yeah.
Okay Laurel, do you want to do fifteen now?
Please describe your managerial style and what that will look like in your role as superintendent. In what ways do you display trust in your faculty's professional decisions?
Yeah, well, I, I actually, it's kind of funny because I've always. And what you do, I mean, it's, it's pretty simple, you you hire people who are smarter than you and you get out of their way. And that's what I, my style was, is that, you know, I, I, I know that there are lots of areas where I'm not very good. But I know who is good and I stay out of their way. There are lots of areas where, you know, I know that there are not such strengths. And I go there and I use my strategy is the, is knock on the door strategy. And I'm not sure if you've heard of it, but it's where you approach the door of someone's home. And if you need them to come to the door, which in this case is you need them to do something, you knock lightly, right? And if, if they come out wonderful, right? They don't, you knock a little harder. They come out great, if if they don't, you pound on the door. They come out great, you've accomplished what you need to. Sometimes you need to blow down the door. And and I've only had to do that a couple of times, but my very, very first approach is to always knock lightly. And I have been incredibly blessed with a staff where if I am coming up the stairs, usually they'll open up the door and. I think that's, um, just basically because you are vulnerable with them and you expect. You know, with people, just as you would expect of yourself and that, um, people are gray, they're not black and white. And that, um, you know, learning as a leader to trust that you, and being myself is. Black and white, you know, is is and then not black and white and gray. I think really lets people know that, that, hey, that you trust their skills, there's a reason they're here and that, um. Man, it's, it's really, it's really quite special really to to kind of know that. You know, I've always had such an incredible team here and I've never taken that for granted. And, um, you know, I've always considered myself very blessed and very lucky to, to have hit here when I did. Because I came, you know. Strolling into the school as a, you know, it's, it's, it's a kindergarten teacher. And, uh, you know, had six years of experience and knew nothing and knew no one. And, uh, you know, in fact, I walked around looking at pictures of people on their walls to see if I could figure out what they look like, because I couldn't find a yearbook. So, um, and then here we are today. So I think, and and in that time, I think I've shown my staff that. I've hired like the certified like eighteen, thirty-five or whatever it was, I mean, it's like half. And that was in five years, I think. That's, that's incredibly hard to get people on the same page and to the same goal where there's not much turnover. Um, and, you know, after my first year, we had, you know, lots of people leave, if people come, then we had people go and. I mean, that, that's been something that, that I feel like has been. Probably one of my proudest things too, but also just kind of like. The, the, also because the people are as good, you know, it didn't happen just because of me. And that's, that's why I think we communicate that to people, you know, and you know when to genuinely praise. Because if you overpraise, it means nothing, you know, if you underpraise, then, you know, that's also bad. But it's also just knowing when to go to someone to say, hey, you know, tell me about this or going to someone and very specifically. Saying what you, you know, hey, I really liked how you handled this, that you mentioned. And I found that people will, you know, run through a wall for you. If, if they like you and they trust you and and they, they want to be someone, they will not, if they don't, they will walk out the door.
I talk about your specific style in dealing with negative behavior in employees, students and community members. Please speak to a specific time when you have had to deal with this and what was the outcome?
So that's a big question as well. So basically how I deal with negative behaviors?
In, in employees or students or community members?
In general, I, I have some issue with the term negative behaviors, because I'm not sure what that, that really means. I, I really never. Seen behavior as a negative or a positive, I, I've just seen that it's a behavior. And then whatever the outcome of that is the outcome of that. Um, because for me to interpret it as negative behavior, you know, and that, that's just up for my interpretation of it. I feel like, um, how I would handle it is just in a professional way. And and again, it would be that person and I versus the problem, not, hey, you, you know, follow what I do or this is how it's going to be done or else. I feel like that, I mean, behavior is always secondary. And emotion is first and when you have, you know, a, a feeling, then, then the behavior comes. So, I mean, that's a, I also need some context in there too about what situation. You know, what, with, with an employee too, you know, you, it's in a staff meeting, you're going to handle that a heck of a lot different than if it's in a closed door session with just you and another person. So, and and again, then it would still be up for interpretation. So, uh, yeah, I feel like. Again, you would just go back to, to the feedback loop of, of trying to understand and interpret why the person may react that way. And not make judgments right away, but to just understand that, that there's an antecedent to that. The behaviors after that.
Thank you.
What do you consider your most significant accomplishments as an educator administrator?
Well, I think the most significant thing that I do is make sure that kids are safe every day. Um, and the teachers have what they need. I feel like, there, there's really, it's hard to say the most significant thing. Because administration is a roller coaster. I mean, there's really good things that happen, I mean, it could be day to day and there's things that are really hard to get through. And I feel like that's just the nature of the bees. And there are days where, you know, the most significant thing I did was survive that day. And there are days where, you know, you walk around going, holy cow, we are doing something special here. I really believe that if I, if I had to and you had something specific, I would say it's bringing the MTSS process out, out here. I feel like, you know, we've been able to increase, you know, our reading levels. We, we've just done a lot of really good stuff in math, I feel like it's been supporting teachers with curriculum. And also supporting the art in teaching and that, you know, we can, you know, definitely supplement the curriculum. Um, I feel like maybe the most significant thing, you know, for kids. Is that I work really hard to make this place where teachers want it to be. Because I feel like if you have happy teachers, you have happy kids. And if you have happy kids, you have kids perform well, or better, she would say, well. But kids watch adults a lot more than we think they do. And kids can interpret adult behavior a lot better than we think they can. And if they can sense strife and struggle, then that's not going to help them. But if they can, if you can provide a happy place. You know, or, I mean, happy place, but if you can provide a place where people want to be and they want to do their best work. Then the kids will follow and it's just a chain, it's a chain, you know, from the top down. I think that would be my answer to that, this is, I think. Yeah, creating a place where teachers want to be creates a place where kids want to be.
Part of the superintendent's job is to recommend non-renewing teachers, the staff, students and a parent group are resistant to teacher being non-renewed. Explain the proper process that should take place prior to non-renewal for the non-tenure teacher.
Yeah, so really that, that comes down to a lot of, you know, where, where you can't say what you want to say. And, and that's really the challenge of it sometimes is just knowing that you've had to make a decision that not a lot of people may understand. But the trusting that you, what you've done is right and that, um, just because there's a lot of people doesn't mean it's the right thing either. I, I've never, you know, trusted consensus as being, you know, what's right or wrong. Sometimes it's not the most people that, you know, are right. I feel like you would definitely need to make sure that you've covered your bases with, you know, MTSBA. Then to get input from all of the stakeholders who would be involved in that too. I think you can't make that, you cannot make that decision in the latter, you cannot make it in haste. You, you certainly, you know, can't make it arbitrarily. So I feel like in order, for it to get to that level, there has to be, you know, something egregious or repeated. You know, unwillingness to change and I feel like if you've. Done your job and you're, you know, in a spot where you know someone's struggling, the first thing would be to ask how to help that person. And, and then, if, that, or again, it goes back to the knocking on the door strategy. And there are some times where it's just, no matter, no matter what, it's not going to work, we're not going to come to the door. But, um, that's probably the hardest thing, I think, in this position, or, I mean, in this field. Is because we work with people, that's really all we work with. I mean, we, we use our machines to send email, that's pretty much all we do and to, you know, project stuff. But we work with people every day, all day, and so. You know, that gets hard when you develop relationships with people too and then you get to make those decisions. Because it affects lives, not just their own, but it's a ripple effect, you know, it affects families. It affects, uh, you know, a lot and. You know, again, sometimes you have to knock the door down. But I think again, with the whole, you know, reaction of a parent group or other staff members. You, you just have to know that that exists and if it exists, then that's, um. You know, you can't make your judgments based on that either, you know, you can't, as a leader, you can't make decisions. Based on what their reaction of other people might be. And that's something I, I pretty, I've learned, you know. Over the years too, is, is because, you know, that, that's the worst way, that's when you get into the swirliness. You know, worrying like, well, if I make this decision, will they not like me? Or if I make this decision, then it'll be easier because I don't have to deal with them. Or if, if I don't do this and what's that for kids, then shoot, that means we'll have a better staff or a board. Because I, I feel like that's where the rubber hits the road. But again. Yeah, in that, in that case, you just got to cover, cover yourself too, the, the district isn't vulnerable, there's some type of, you know. Appeal or, or liability, but in a non-tenure teacher, that's a lot you have to do. So.
Okay, um, what do you consider to be your greatest strengths as an administrator? And, and, um, what do you feel are areas you need to grow?
I think, I think my greatest strength as an administrator is, uh, just seeing, um. Where people are at their best and trying their, and trying my best to get them there and to, um, really. True, really, really work hard to provide an open, um, approachable, you know, constructive and. Facilitating personality. I think that's probably my biggest strength. I think, you know. I don't know, my biggest weakness, um, you know, is that I have no weaknesses. I think honestly, my biggest weakness is probably, yeah. You know, some of the nuance between, you know, events that is in special ed, I think that's an area that I could grow. I think all leaders in its schools could grow from that. Because I've learned that that's really a lot of what, what you do in a responsible board. And it's where the school is most vulnerable to litigation as well. I went to, uh, the train, the training in Pulsar. That they do and it was the school of law training and. You gotta go to bed soon, do not go to that because it'll scare you to death, then, I mean, they're, they're going to take everything you own and burn the school down, I mean. It's, the, yeah, and that's all, you know, spent stuff, really, it's IEPs and it's, you know, promises and it's, it's a lot. So I feel like if you've got an administrator or administration. Who is experienced in special ed and it affects ten percent of your population, sure, but probably ninety percent of what you do. You know, to be honest too, is responding to kids who, who are in crisis or, you know. You know, trying to get their scores up, so you're working with, you know, all of your support staff to figure out how to get them to great level. It's where a lot of your resources are staff wise, I mean, we had, what, five, six people, um. In a spot where, you know, very many kids. So, and then also just being by families with the, you know, kind of the knowledge that. That you know what you're doing and that they're trusting their kid that needs help, you know, um. Who's in a, you know, situation that isn't like other kids. If, if they, if they can see that your team knows what's going on and can answer questions confidently, that, that's huge for parents. I feel like that's, um, I would feel like there's really too much to know about that. But really that, those are probably my greatest strengths and then also just getting aware, I think, you know, a lot of people can improve, so.
Thank you.
Why do you feel you are the best candidate for this position?
Well, I feel like um. Feel like I'm the best candidate because I feel like my institutional knowledge is 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 wide. But yet, you know, I'm also able to see the big picture and I feel like um. One of the strengths I I have is that I can look at a situation, consider all pieces. In in a, in a, you know, kind of a structural way and know how they fit in with the time, the place, and the who. Um, I feel like. I trust people do, you know, what they need to do, but at the same time, you know, also know then when you have to step in. I feel like my approach is always very calm and people oriented first. I feel like. You know, in a way, um, I don't know, you know, if anybody's truly ready for the job. Right away, so there's a learning curve to it, but I can tell you that I learn really quick, I learn very fast. And um, I'm like a cat and then I land on my feet, no matter where I go and uh. I think that you could, you could trust me to to be genuine, um, you could trust me to put everybody else first. Kids number one, then everybody else and then me last. So. Yeah, I feel like um. Yeah, in a lot of ways, I feel like it's it's the right timing for me. It's a challenge for me, so. You know, I think it's an exciting opportunity. To have too.
What are your thoughts on collaboration and mentorship between school superintendents? And what opportunities, if any, would you like to pursue for yourself in this area?
I think the superintendents in this valley should talk a heck of a lot more. Um, I've really never understood why they they do like a one, one a week like call with each other, that's not even every one of them. Um, there's really not that many of them, I mean. The principals, administrators in general in this valley, I mean, it's it's uh. And then you get to the superintendent piece and it's even less, much less. Um, so I feel like I would, I mean, I would reach out to, you know, the assistant superintendents and the new superintendent in Kalispell. Quite a bit, um, you know, for help and guidance, I feel like, you know, I have good relationships with them. I feel like, you know, that the we do know, you know, of each other, you know, each other. And I feel like that would be a great opportunity to learn from them too. Because, yeah, it's it's another job that you can come in assuming you know everything and I feel like reaching out. To people is no matter, not if it's just a superintendent, but even just other people in general, administrators, say, hey. You come through this before, what would you do or, um, let's set up a meeting, let's have, you know. Meetings together, we used to have a calendar meeting that we would go to and discuss the calendar with, you know, most of the districts in the valley. Big days, you know, it's just kinda hasn't happened and it's just something that maybe COVID took away and it tried to come back recently. It's, I I I really feel like there should be more unification for us to, we we are a valley, right? I mean, we have what, thirteen districts here, which it's a lot for the amount of people we have here. So there's no reason that we cannot communicate and talk more than for a call or, you know, hey, are you gonna close schools today? Anything like that, um, but I, you know, and and I feel like we we tend to just kinda. Get in our own worlds and our own bubbles and and again, do what's, you know, safe for us and so maybe that's cause some, you know. Uh, opportunity loss working together, but I I don't see a reason why we shouldn't be talking to each other more. Coming together more, because that's how you learn too. And I, yeah, I would strive to, to, you know, put West Valley's foot best foot forward and represent us well. Represent our needs well and communicate them and try to figure out how to get them.
How do you plan to communicate with the public on matters of school concern?
Yeah, I think communicating with the public is super hard and and you would think that it would be so easy because of social media, because of our access to. Email and phones, but it seems like we communicate less um than we ever have before, which I find really unfortunate and. One of the reasons I really hate social media in general, so that would be difficult, to be honest, to wanna come in and Facebook everywhere, that's not my style. Um, I would let other people that I trust do that, I would be a part of the behind the scenes message. And definitely look into ways to how to get, maybe it's, you know, by bringing people in to the building. I think, you know, with this levy thing, we're gonna have to get our message out there through, and the way to do that is through social media. But I really feel like it, there's a, there's a population out there that we're not hitting, obviously. And, you know, we keep saying like we have to, you know, put our presence there, put our presence there, put our presence there. And they, they may, they probably don't wanna come in either, you know, um, but we have to figure out a way. To where our message trickles to them. Because it's for some reason, the message trickling to them is not a good message. And so I think maybe the answer is that we focus on the quality of our messages instead of the quantity of them. And and maybe that's the answer, but if you speak to one community member, you're gonna speak to twenty, right? Because that person's gonna go and talk to other people and then that person's gonna go and talk to other people. And so if those other people on the fringes are hearing the consistent message that West Valley's wasting money or whatever, that's gonna become the reality, you know. So we have to figure out how to get a quality message out. That's constructive, that will ripple into um, a positive message for those folks. Because it's, I mean, it's not a secret that there's negative feelings towards, you know, taxes now, property taxes. I mean, you can't, shoot, I mean, that's huge, I mean, we got, what what messages in the mail that some people are going up ninety percent, ninety seven percent. Um, the average in Montana is forty, I think, in the whole state, where we're hit harder because of where we live. So, yeah, you got that coming on and then you've got West Valley School, that's like, you know, the beat the popper, like, you know. Um, opening their hat for some coins or whatever and it's just not, it's not a good, it's quite possibly one of the worst things to be asking anybody for money. And so. I mean. Yeah, there is no good answer for that, I can promise you that, but um, but I do feel like. The the I think in the past, I think some of our messaging has been just to try to shotgun a blast to as many people. But I'm wondering if we need to focus on writing letters to the editor, papers, like teachers, to respond if we need to. You know, um, big people to interview us for, you know, whether that be local magazines or. You know, um, online posts or fine, you know, authors out there that will write something for us. I mean, there's gotta be a way to do it so where it's not just like we're hitting moms and dads on Facebook in the afternoon when they're scrolling after school. That's not working. And again, I don't, I don't have the answer for you and if I told you I did, I'd be lying to you, which I, which I don't wanna do, but. Again, we're set up for quite possibly the hardest levy pass in the history of levy passes. And we haven't done one since two thousand seven, so it's gonna be a challenge and but it's gonna be a need again. And so maybe that's being more purposeful with the legislature, but then again, that's, you know. Not gonna happen again for a little bit, then, you know, it's a, it's a tough road out there. And the, you know, things always shift and ebb and flow and so maybe eventually we'll come back and, you know, the. The people wanna shower us with money, I don't think that's going to happen, but I feel like. Yeah, I feel like that's the biggest deal, yeah.
Superintendents have a great deal of work to accomplish that requires office time. What level of visibility within the school and classrooms do you envision for yourself in your role as superintendent? What will that visibility look like for you?
Yeah, I I always wanted to be a visible leader, I. I I I don't love office work, it's something that I have to get done, you know, but my uh. My teachers can tell you that, you know, I'm in classrooms a lot and, you know, I I uh. I don't like the the day to day grind of sitting at a computer and typing all day, it's it's hard for me. But, so I I really like to get out there. I know, I know that the job of superintendent is much different than that of a principal, but I really feel like I would be a very visible superintendent. I would not be a superintendent that closed my door and, well, you know, stayed there for weeks at a time or, you know, was off campus and. Stayed there for weeks at a time, um, I feel like. The more people see you, the more they know you, the more they trust you. And I feel like, yeah, I feel like that would be something that I I would feel more visible, I think. Yeah, and I just feel like that's so important to be genuine too, and you kind of, by being. You know, I guess, away and secluded and so sequestered is, yeah, you get a lot of stuff done and you get a lot of rain there. But you get further and further and further away from the trenches by doing that and you get further and further away from seeing what's going on in a classroom. And, you know, kids are in trouble or, you know, in crisis and they need, they need help. You get further and further and further away from what it's like, you know, to walk in. Do a room full of desks every day with twenty kids looking at you and you've got, you know, six, seven hours to entertain, right? Um, it's a tough job, Monday morning, you've gotta be on like that and you have, you know, you don't have the. It luxury of, you know, sitting on the computer checking email for two hours drinking coffee. When you're a teacher, you come in and you go, and I think as a superintendent, I would really work hard to try to remember that, that's what I I try to do as a principal. Try to walk the hallways, um, you know, a lot, few rounds, like. Um, I see in the classrooms a lot more than people need to know I do, just because, you know, you walk by and you kind of know and you walk through and many times, but. Yeah, I get my steps in in the day, um, it was really, really hard this year because of circumstances, but I really try. To talk to everybody every day. And that that's my style, so, and I did that as a teacher too, where I tried to talk, had, you know, talk to get kids every day, every kid every day. And I know that's hard sometimes, but, you know, especially in the, you know, upper grades and you have a little bit, but. You know, I I tried to have a meaningful interaction, you know, especially as like a fifth grade teacher with every kid every day. And then with, you know, some, sometimes, you know, I would make goals for myself or I'd say, I'm gonna visit Kinder and third today. I'm gonna go in there and I'm gonna get it done, have some meetings, conversations. Or I'm gonna visit, you know, because I have to do this other meeting, so I'll make it first and fourth in there, and I go say hi every day. And um, sometimes I got into every classroom every day this year, but it was, it was way more the rarity than it was the. Reality of there being a lot, but. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be, you know, also doing the other piece too, but let that go, go away. Now, I think in this time of transition, it would be about most important too. Because I feel like, you know, it's a familiar face and stuff like that, there's people, gonna be so much change. But, you know, also so much that we have the same. Feel like we need to embrace that, feel like we need to. Move on a little bit and I I feel like we need to open the doors next year with with some fresh air and and a new opportunity.
Thank you. Thanks, back to me, um, are there any questions you wish we would have asked you?
Oh, maybe, yeah, I think, um, maybe a little bit more about my my past or about myself. I I feel like you guys all know me and stuff and I feel like it's uh, really good to kind of know you guys at a personal level. So I think like, just even sharing the story of how we got here. It's funny because I expected kind of the first thing to be, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you applied to this position was by school, um, but it was hitting the ground running. That's right.
What's different too, because we felt like we kind of knew, you know, the candidates.
Well, no, I I taught, I taught at Hedges, um, you know, I taught at, right, I taught fifth grade, I taught third grade, I taught kindergarten. Um, I grew up in the valley, moved here in seventh grade when my parents retired. To to live, to live here, um, I have, yeah. Yeah, I've always been in school here, I went to Flathead High School. And I rooted, well rooted in the area, went to the University of Montana. Actually, kind of funny story about that, I I received a senatorial nomination to the Naval Academy. But um, at the last minute, my doctor here prescribed me with high blood pressure, which is called hypertension basketler disease. So it sounds really nasty, then the Department of Defense Medical Review Board denied my waiver to go anyway. Um, and so I ended up at FBCC where um, I did a bachelor's degree in two, little over two years. And then kinda went back in and wasn't happy with business stuff and got my. Masters in licensing and business, uh, teaching business at my school, five twelve, and then student taught there. And then I went back, got my elementary degree and my masters of education at the same time and then um. Got a masters in curriculum, technically, there's a lot of overlap with that. Um, and then got my admin cert after teaching for three years and then, yeah, been here for six years. Not that that had to be about me at the end.
I think we did that a little before at the beginning on question number one that says four kids' strength.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions for us?
Um, you know, I I feel like those will come later, you know, I feel like, um. It kinda, I mean, yeah. Really, if you, I don't know, are we on time? Past my bedtime in the winter right now, so, yeah, I feel like, um, as a, as a group, you've probably. You know, talked about your vision, but um, I think, you know, what what is the one thing that you feel like, um, you need in a superintendent?
We weren't prepared for this. I think with this last year, you know, for me anyway, is just making sure. Everything's followed from Montana code to legislature to like the whole financial piece when it comes to the budget. As we all know, this has been a learning year for everyone, so just really making sure that we're, you know. Financially responsible, make sure we're within that, it's probably the biggest piece, but also meeting the needs of the school. And then commute on the students, everybody here, where it's safe, but functioning within that, in our financial budget.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to engender that, the philosophy of the school, as Jeff mentioned it, where you see so many smiling faces. The kids are smiling, the teachers are smiling, um, and, you know, surveys we've had, that one of the kids, the kids' biggest comment is. The teachers are nice and, and and they like, you know, and we're happy and whatever. I I just think, I think that that's what I would really like to see in gen, in gendered at at every level. And, you know, just communication accessibility, just a general body language that says. Happy and. Genuine and, and just open to that kind of, let me talk about culture, I should like to see that one. Perpetuated in a, in the superintendent, I think, has a lot to do.
I mean, it's hard, so there's like not one quality, um, I feel like we are searching and anyone searching to fill a superintendent position. Searching for a uniform, right, like, so we're looking for someone that likes policy, that likes codes, that is good with staff. That can pay attention to the finances, that's a good public speaker. Lot, um, so truly like kind of looking for that whole package and, um. You know, I think the biggest thing is someone that can maintain. And ideally, like significantly improve school climate and culture, because we can always get better. Um, while at the same time making sure that things don't slip through the, through the cracks. You know, little things.
Yeah, I'd I'd build on that, I think, obviously, there's checking the boxes is extremely important, but I think that's. Um, something that, you know, people can, you know, kind of learn and or lean on professionals to kind of build them up, I think. From my perspective, I think, you know, what we really want is somebody to, you know, everybody's been through a lot, you know, through COVID, especially teachers. Uh, and students, you know, I mean, a lot of us were lucky enough to be kind of insulated in our own professions from it to a degree, but. You guys have been through a lot, you know, and then coming back has been a, is a huge transition and challenge too, and there's definitely a lot of work to be done. And I think there's. A lot of things you mentioned in your interview, just kind of restoring what the culture and the school kind of. Just the felt like and how it flourished prior to COVID and having somebody be able to focus on bringing that back. That's why we're all here, you know, so, right. Um, that's, uh, you know, I think that's a real equality that I think is gonna be. You know, and something that's gonna be, I think, the hardest, but I think it's a, it's a quality that, that we're really looking for. Um, I know just in the last year, just being on the board. Um, you know, we've learned so much on the technical aspects of, of what to do. Um, but it's really hard to know the right thing to say all the time, you know, and that, that's a, that's a quality that's really hard to kind of learn quickly, so. I'll leave it at that.
You know, I have just one question here that I'm not gonna let leave unanswered. Um, we have your educator license here.
Do you?
And it seems to be out of date.
Oh, no, did I put the wrong one in?
I think that I hate to bring this up, um, but I.
Probably the most rich and gross thing ever.
I mean, I, that, yeah, and that's why I, you know, I had a whole conference here, but I.
I can get you the right one.
That would be great because. It expired in twenty one and I'm thinking.
Dates behind, but not that much.
And, you know, I knew if we had one because in our accreditation, when they issue that accreditation notice, they wouldn't let us know that we had a principal. I just wanted, I just wanted to be sure. To, uh, thank you. Okay, well, um, I think. Do you have anything that you would like to say that as an executive? In, in executive board that you don't want anybody else to hear?
No.
Okay. Then I think. We finished, we can say thank you very much.
Thank you guys for being here. It is eight thirty.
Forty minutes right to the restroom.
I can confirm that I just looked up his licensure is active through twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
You're good.
I just, you know, I. Yes, for bathroom, I couldn't go in to speak. So, okay, so we're into the discussion of candidate qualifications, public comment. So, any positive comments? And we'll set the timer for three minutes for anybody who wishes to make a positive comment at this. Anybody raise your hand? Then we will call you, call you, use your, say your name and make the comment, correct? Otherwise. Okay, we can discuss or, or we can make a motion and then discuss. I guess it's up to us. What we wanted to discuss first or make a motion first. I don't know why we can't take a motion first and go.
I mean, I'd just like to say I was really impressed with both of their interviews. I, yeah, I. Don't think I would have done as well. So, uh, it was, it was very impressive. I think we're lucky to have both of them on staff and, uh. Really appreciate them offering to step up into the interim position. Uh, because nobody else would. So this is, these are the candidates that we have. I think they're the best candidates we have and, um, it's a tough decision between two.
I think if we had a group candidate out there, if we had twenty people out there, they would definitely come to the top. I mean, there'd be no question about it. My thing is that they're such different personalities, different men's styles. It, it would almost be nice if they could work together more, you know what I mean? If we could have.
Well, you're right. No matter which one we pick, they will have to work.
But I mean, I mean, we could have, you know, once, yeah, they could be like co-supperintendents, somebody takes care of the. Particulars and, and the laws and somebody else takes care of the handshaking and, and, you know, I, I just think we have perfect. But, but we don't have that. And I don't think, actually, suggestion was made to me more than once that we do have. Oh, superintendent. Now we put both of them together as super. Which is something we can't talk about. I'm just throwing that out. That was suggested to me that we have co-supperintendents using each of them. Now, I just wanted to throw that out. Everybody needs to discuss what though. And, and I've been kind of thinking about the logistics that are pretty hard to wrap your mind around. Um.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my understanding was just with our, our size and kind of the accreditation standards that we had to have a full time.
No, no, we would have a full time, but each of them would be doing half. I think that would be hard to.
I think it's, I think it's because then you'd have, you'd have co-supperintendents, then you'd have to have. Co, they'd have to be a co-supperintendent halftime principal, and then you'd have to have another. Co-half time principal, it kind of ripples down a little bit. I mean, it is, it is kind of a. You know, you can see the strengths in both candidates and, and I see the, the, uh, the thought there. I, I do. Feel like leaning towards selecting one is the appropriate route, but it's good to consider.
Yeah, because they suggested we have to have a very detailed contract. About who could do what. And you know, you know, that just opens the whole kettle of worms. Uh, even, even while it sounded first when it was presented to me, I thought, oh, yes, then we don't have to make a decision. But, um, but then as you get to thinking about the logistics, it, it just becomes something that it wouldn't be worth. So I don't think in the end, so that's off the table, but I just wanted to mention. Yeah, yeah, we would know. And you know, in the end, you always have to have the buck stopping at somebody. And if you had the buck stopping out two people, it could be, I think maybe it wouldn't work, but I, I did. Suggest that because it was suggested to me as a possibility. And it had worked. School District Five, I guess, did it a few years ago. I don't remember in particular, but I wasn't following things at that point. At school District Five, but they did it a few years ago, had co-supperintendents, but they weren't in the same building. I don't know. At what point where they had to have two superintendent, co-supperintendents, but it worked for them.
They have a little more overhead budget.
Well, and they, and they weren't pulling, they weren't pulling individuals out of jobs. And they, I mean, like we are and leaving, yeah. So, that's. I, I brought it up. I feel we discussed it fair enough. So we now we're in the process of trying to figure out which one would be a better fit for the school as it is right now. For one year. And that's it. Um, even though as your question indicated, it, it, but. At which point at the end of that year, or I mean, not whole year, but six months into it or whatever, when they have a pretty good feel of what it's like. That superintendent position is gonna be open and they can file for that. Yeah, they're not, they're not gonna be. Put into that superintendent position unless they would go through the proper. Channel like else unless just one of them, one person applied, will cross that bridge when we come to it, but. It's not like we would automatically transfer the interim into that. Into the regular one. That's, that can't happen. So we'll do the interim for one year. That's what we have.
Think so presumably, I think we, I mean, do we make any. Assertions that obviously being an interim and we have two great candidates that we don't, you know, necessarily want to. We can have, obviously, we have to kind of structure this whole shift. So that it, we got to the end of the year and maybe there was a different candidate or they didn't want to continue that we could kind of shift back. Into their existing position structure.
Oh, I see what you mean. I think we could make that as, as part of the contract to use, don't you? When we talk to MTSBA, because they will be talking to us on this, I mean, the contract will be written by those people. We will be sure and put in there that whoever decides to, or, you know, whoever we decide, if they want to go back to their principal position. At the end of the interim year, it's there for them. Do you think, is that what we're talking about, Jeff?
I was just, yeah, I, I thought that would be appropriate, just given how, you know, the two candidates internally that we maybe should offer that. And somehow make sure that that works.
What do you think? What does everybody think about that?
Yeah.
What do you think? Well, I give that to that, that we just go ahead and when we, when we talk to MTSB about that contract, make sure that provision is in there. Because it's really, you know, both of them express the desire that, that they may want to stay on as superintendent. Um, but then again, uh, it'd be a new. Uh, a new position and maybe they wouldn't like it as well. Maybe they want to go back to having a better. You know, we don't know, we don't know that. I don't think they would be did either at that point. Most people don't have a year like this to wave in through a job like this to figure out whether they like it or not. This is a great opportunity for, you know, for whoever it is. But I, yeah. I'm not sure they're all excellent candidates. And if we had a bunch, they rise to the top and we'd still be talking this way.
Are there qualities though, I think, that we need to think about? It's like, are there qualities that bring one candidate to the top for us, you know?
That's why I want to bring up, you know, what does a school really need right now? That, I think that's what we. What, what does it need right now? And I think. Part of it is. I guess I, for want of a better word, we need the back flapper in the hand, shake or maybe, but I don't, I don't know for sure. And I didn't know that Richard actually had to business education.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't either until he said that today.
And that's the other thing that, that we're kind of in need of right now is somebody that, you know, because of the budget situation. That understands the business and that a little bit, it's better. Um, and I, I was surprised to hear that he had that. I, I guess I hadn't really read it. And what information that.
If he, if he's.
I think we need somebody relationship wise that can kind of unify and bring everything back together as good as possible with. But just kind of how this last year was.
Well, I think the other thing, you know, the, the middle school is. The middle school has got a lot more issues. Basically, with, with kids. And teachers, just by the nature of middle school kids. And we have a really strong person in there and we handle that really, really well. And, and, and it took four out of there. So, you know, I don't, I don't know. Now, as far as pulling another principal up into that position, do we plan that of this superintendent? Do we open those principal positions up? Um, I mean, and then do. How does that work? Um, I could, it's one question I didn't ask. Um.
You know, I think i- it's worth, and I'm just. Trying to treat the position because obviously we are a newer board. We have a lot to learn. We've got, um. Obviously, a lot of skill going on that we can lean on, but there's gonna be things that we have to figure out. I don't know whether we would create a committee. Um, of just two of us or whether that would be, I, in some ways, I would almost lean towards. A larger decision in conjoin, in conjunction with the superintendent, just given. All the crazy changes that we've had, but I think that's something that we can talk with MTSBA and. Other, you know, districts about and figure that out. Um. I think right now, granted, I'm coming into this very new, but I, I do think that we need. Some balm to kind of bring things back together, create some cohesiveness, um. You know, and launch us into whatever the next year looks like. Um, but I think if we can put in place like, you know, resources, mentorship. Ability for whoever we put in this position to kind of draw on, like, what are the big, like, what are the big things need to be happening each month? What are the deadlines to be aware of? If we can hit that part and help them with that, you know, for me, I think the leadership. Part and just like that, it's hard. People, people are so tricky, um, making sure that we can really. Put someone in that's got those people skills.
And I think us as a board need to be better about being very specific on our goals and vision overall for the district to make sure that we're setting up. Now, whoever we put in a position for success rather than not going into a blind.
Could be a lot more work on our part.
We, you know, we, we have a strategic planning phase, which should be blueprint for decisions we make, but.
I feel like we're doing like a survival plan, so.
If, if we look at, I think we need to look at how we get from surviving to thriving in realistic, attainable ways. Um. Like, obviously, we cannot shoot pie in the sky right now. That's not realistic. It's gonna set everybody up for failure. But I think if we can begin to work on getting feedback. From our community, from our staff. Um, in what they see is, you know, the strengths and what they see as weaknesses, then as a board, I think we can really develop a clear sense of direction on how we want to proceed. And handle things.
Well, whatever we do, we have to, we're gonna have to, I know the correct word is monitor, but. We're gonna have to have real close relationship with our superintendent to, to make sure that, that, uh. That we know what they are doing and that was a weakness slash. We need to be sure that, that we know what's expected of them, like, and you mentioned that, that we, we know what's expected of them, but then follow up. And see if that's really, we've got to be more aware of that this year, that with, especially with a new one. I know we, each of the people I talk to, all of the, all of the fellows. Um, Mark Quatow and, yeah, I always forget their name, but Mike. Nikasia, Dave Wick, all live here and they all said they would be happy to help us pretend and what it is. And I, you know, I think, I think they, um, you didn't mention she had her own mentor, which is great. Um, but, but I'm sure that these, these guys really would reach out. They just didn't want to take that. And you can't win, but that's, uh, anyway. Um, whoever it is, we're gonna have to be really careful that. You know, doesn't drive a worse wedge in between the two schools. That, that's what scares me. I really want to be, everybody be aware of that fact that, you know, we talk about trying to draw the middle school and. And the elementary together, but. It's beginning to be, you know, maybe they think we're growing apart a bit. That's what's the main thing. Well, the teachers have got to be behind that. And they've got to be able to rally behind whoever it is that we choose, um, even if it's not. When they. I, that scares, that scares me. For one year, everybody needs to rally behind. Whoever is the interim superintendent, but one year, I have to give it their best shot. That's all we've got. Anyway. And I guess we should make a, you know, discussion here where I hope it's all open or not, but, um. If we can do this at this time, it's appropriate or not, but Justin Bowles has resigned from the board. So, um, we'll be looking for a new board member going forward. Um, and we'll need to put out that. What we need to announce it to everyone, uh, make a public announcement and then maybe two weeks for people to turn it out. What we need to a- announce it to everyone, uh, make a public announcement and then maybe two weeks for people to turn in applications. At which point we'll see the applications and then we'll go, we'll choose one. So it will be an appointment of the board from applications that are present. And you think two weeks is good? Cause we just, let's still, you know.
Oh, man.
Well, hopefully we can revisit some of the, the candidates that, uh, applied last time.
Well, can, can, but I think before did we have to do, did that be an action item? No, we had a motion on opening that position. I believe we did before.
Oh, great. We have to make a motion to accept the resignation.
Start with MTSBA.
We probably do have to have a motion to accept the resignation. And, and then it's beneficial. I mean, it's, it's. He, he added it into Cecilia's official resignation. But we don't have, we don't have an, as an action item. So I guess it's pretty much an information item right now. And we had discussion though, as a, not an action item, but just a discussion item, a date for the, for the budget finance workshop session. Um, I don't know when we wanted to plan to do that, but at the same time, then we could add. Could add that as an action item. I'd like to.
Yeah, I think we need to do the, the budget. Um, we talked about, um, Terry, like making sure that we get that decision on. Curriculum out before the end of the month. So we gotta do that. At the latest, you know, kind of early next week.
What about Monday night at five thirty? Getting kind of used to. If, if we could, if we just do, are you okay? Yeah, check.
Miss Simon, nobody does it.
But okay, company at home.
Yeah, I mean, it's really not ideal, but if that's.
If there's a better day during the week, that's.
I don't, we have family in town. Out of state, uh, and a whole bunch of work stuff, but. Well, that's a bummer. Um.
We can make it. I mean, I don't, but I think, I mean, as long as it's.
Yeah, I mean, his resignation, I think, um, obviously. There's been history, but I think he brought a lot of decent ideas and input to the board, so I'm hoping that, you know, we'll find. Good candidates out there, especially it's tricky with summer. You know, not sure who will.
Well, we had several.
Yeah.
It, 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 when you, you know, you applied, there were several that, that were, wouldn't have been great candidates. We pulled their, um, applications and asked them if they would want to. I assume they would, you know? So it's not like we're totally without.
Right, right. Um, yeah, so I guess is, is the budget even ready though? Because the last time we met, there was nothing even prepared.
So we don't have an answer for that, do we?
Not at this point.
What is, um, I'm excited, not had my fingers in the budget like correctly at all. What is needed? In order for us to be able to make a good curriculum decision?
Well, I think this decision is part of it, you know, what we did here as a large part of it, um. You know, the, the balance there is getting a decent estimate on what August or what, uh, sorry, June. Numbers look like, which seem to be still, there's a, you know, you do the end of your payroll. So that's still like, uh, apparently this is still something that the numbers are in. Flux four, um, kind of to close out the year. Um, so we're looking for an estimate. I think it's feasible that we would have it next, next week.
Are there county numbers that she was waiting for?
Yeah.
And they've come in.
Okay.
And Cindy was working with you yesterday.
Okay, great.
Okay, so I, I assume that by next week. We should be able to have. What we need. Because those figures are in now.
I would just say, yeah, the plan that Monday.
What should we do? Okay, especially Monday at five thirty again, and this will be budget eating. And at that time, we'll put as an action item. The acceptance of. Of Justin's, um, resignation and then we can go forward with that.
Posting for a replacement.
All right, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to go forward with that as soon as we can. Um, there's no reason not to. So, um. Okay, we'll do that.
We've seen a decision between the two.
I, I really do think that they're both, you know, great candidates. Um, in, in my opinion, I think. Richard's what we need, um, as an interim at this point. I think there's strong long-term potential with him too, with his connection with the community. Um, and I think he's the right guy to, to lead this board. So I'll make a motion to, um. Offer an employment negotiation of terms to Richard Gross, if I said that correctly.
Is there a second? So I, 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 I guess I should be, so offer.
Shouldn't create the offer. I'll make a motion regarding, regarding the offer to offer employment and further negotiation of terms of the player.
I'll second it. Should we just add in there that the contract though would be with MTSBA that they would be helped track enough that contract?
I would assume we'd have to, uh, approve that publicly as well.
Yeah, yeah, too. So the, of, of employment and, and for the negotiated terms under MTSBA guidance. Right? They're not, under MTSBA guidance. To Richard, right? That's your motion. And. Stephanie? Do you second in them then? All right. Is there any other discussion? Any discussion? Right?
Just that it was a tough decision on both candidates to know that, you know, they both did a great job and. We definitely need everybody working together, rallying behind, moving forward for the next year. And supporting each other.
It was a terrible decision on our part, but I get right. There's so many pros and cons. I think in the end, um, everybody just needs to, uh, one and will.
Well, let's all be excited moving forward.
All right, now time to vote. All this in favor?
I.
I opposed. Done, so, uh, Richard Gross will be offered the, the employment contract. I, I will let him know. I will phone him, let him know. Okay? And then.
Done the same courtesy to Tina.
Oh, yeah.
So she doesn't have to find out.
No, I'll call both of them. I have, well, both of their numbers are on their resumes anyway. That's how we got a hold of them last night. It's all. I'll get a hold of Tina and Richard and let them both know. And both of them.
And then just to clarify, Monday at five thirty. That we'll have, it sounds like I believe the budget's cut out through May and we'll have estimates through the end of June for expenditures. Because hopefully what we're shooting for, right?
That would be the, the, the whole crap.
Maybe I did any estimates. So you can, you guys will contact Cecilia and let her know that, those particulars.
Sure.
That's what you need. Okay, Jeff. So that she, when she comes here, she will have those.
Should we not have those? Then how do we proceed?
We do the action.
I mean, I think we need to, yeah, touch base with her to make sure we get it. And if we need to bring Cindy Foley in to be able to get those. Numbers, hopefully she can work with Cindy Foley to kind of get those.
So if we let her know, we're expecting, I hope she feels better tomorrow.
I mean, we technically don't approve our budget till.
No.
August, but, you know, and we really don't have an option of curriculum. So, I mean, it's, you're kind of, we're kind of putting it off, but there's really. I don't understand how you can really put it off or not do it sometimes.
And it was gonna, I mean, we're gonna, now if we don't have to hire a full-time. Sub, uh, superintendent from the outside, that should free up some budget money, right?
Potentially it could, yeah.
I mean, we're gonna still have to hire.
Hopefully we can get that through with Cecilia as well.
If we, it's, we're gonna have to.
There, obviously there's, there's a hole created somewhere that we'll have to figure out.
Right. Which will have to be discussed. But, um, but it should, it should free up some budget money, I would think. Hopefully. Anyway, we, we will meet and it will just be a discussion, but she should have those estimates. We should be able to talk about. What we can do going forward. Be, because that August meeting is gonna be here before we know it, where we have to get the budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that should free up some curriculum stuff.
Well, I think we just need to make that decision. Um, yeah, obviously it's a.
Okay. So Monday night, we'll let, in your room, talk to Cecilia later. All right. Make a motion to adjourn. And on favor?
I.